Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Commissioners meeting scheduled for Monday, March 22, 2021. We are streaming live via Zoom. Let's get started today with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll start by giving notice that we had on March 11th, 2021, an executive meeting of the Board of Commissioners at which we discussed issues relating to personnel, legal matters that are not doctored in any court at the moment, and another personnel issue. Moving on to public participation. I'm going to start by looking at the participants that we have. I will tell everyone, if you are here and you would like to give public comment about either Eastern University zoning map amendment or the Eagle Rader Road Eagle slash Rader Road Eastern University caucus item, we're more than welcome to give comments about both of those items that both have been withdrawn by the applicant as premature. We will be addressing them at a later date, assuming they are brought to us again by the applicant. So with that said, do we have any attendees who would like to offer public participation? Seeing no hands, is there anyone who is a participant in the call who would like to give public participation? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to remove?
Yes. I'd like to remove item F, please.
And Commissioner Farkey.
The F, but at least you got it, Commissioner.
Um, okay, let's start with consent agenda item two F, resolution 2020-33, authorizing the removal of dead and dying ash trees on the corner of State Route 320 and Conestoga Road, and replanting the area in the amount of $1,800 as recommended by the Shade Tree Commission. Steve Northini, is this you?
Yes, sir. I'm filling in for Public Works. So Commissioner, to the commissioners, there is a parcel of land over on 320 and Conestoga Road. And Ian, if you'll let me share my screen. I don't know if you can see this PDF.
I can't, Steve.
Now, let's switch screens. Yeah?
Not yet.
Okay, Ian, why don't you just pull it up like our, like we planned? So, the area in green is the parcel we're talking about that's bordered by 320 and Conestoga Road right at the 476 overpass. You can see that it's labeled. So the arborist was on site last year and determined that their, his report is included as part of this. And, and this also went to Shade Tree Commission. Twenty-five of the ash trees and fifteen elm trees he deems that need to be removed. So the plan would be to use horgan tree experts whose quote is in the packet for $9,800. They would remove the forty trees. They would leave the stumps flush with the ground. This is a forested area. So what the ground cover will recoup after the clearing person is out of there. Then the plan would be to plant thirty whips. If you're familiar with them, they're the smaller items that are, and they will have deer tubing around them. There's also a quote for the whips. You can see it's hackberry, flowering dogwood, and white oak. So the idea was to reforest the area. It is not, was not intended as of this plan to be a landscaped area. It would be to reforest the area. And again, this was before Shade Tree Commission, at which they approved the plan. So that's what you have before you, and I can answer any questions if you need.
Um, so Steve, thank you very much. I do recall when this was before Shade Tree, I think several months ago. And they, they did discuss it and, and talk a lot about how to reforest that. Can you just describe for the rest of the commissioners who weren't privy to the Shade Tree meeting, why this, um, you know, kind of what precipitated this?
Sure. So HOSPAC was called out to look at a specific tree or trees near the adjacent house, and that would be to the right of that green area. And based on his report, says per my review, there are approximately twenty-five subject ash trees that represent ninety percent of the canopy of the subject plot. Unfortunately, all of them are dead or declined beyond recovery. Emerald Ashbore is the culprit. Sixteen to eighteen of these trees are likely to strike the road or adjacent property, which would be that house I noted. And he strongly recommends removing all trees. And then he goes on to something to mitigate planting. And he notes the thirty whips with the deer tubes. So there's, there's hazardous trees in there that could affect one of our residents' homes as well as Spring Mill Road, Conestoga Road, or Sproll Road.
And Steve, just for, you know, so everyone can, you know, understand what to expect. And, you know, when this first came before Shade Tree, I think it was right around the time that we'd had the situation at 476. And I know that, you know, residents are very tuned into, you know, when trees are being cleared and things like that. So what can people expect to see? You know, I travel through that intersection all the time. You know, it does look like a very green wooded area. What can people expect to see, do you think, once these trees are taken down?
So the, the plan as put forth calls for the removal of all the trees. So it would be very different from what you pass by now in that there would be no trees left. There would be some ground cover, and that ground cover would recuperate as well as the thirty whips. Now, whips, thirty whips with deer tubes aren't necessarily very noticeable from the street. But in speaking to the arborist, that would be a reforestation plan. And I do remember from our many Shade Tree meetings that if you were to plant one of these whips as well as a two and a half inch caliper bald and burlap tree, that in five to ten years, they would be the same size, and the whip would actually be healthier, based on what our arborist said. So Commissioner, to your point, it would be very different in that all those trees would be removed.
And then just one other thing, Stephen, and I believe he did talk about this when it came to Shade Tree, although I can't remember exactly. You know, the, the loss of the forestation there, is there, are there any concerns around, you know, potential for flooding? I mean, that's definitely a loss of a, a lot of, of a wooded area. Are there any concerns about that with the intersection me is right there?
So you mean from a stormwater standpoint?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've all seen where trees do soak up a lot of water through and through evapotranspiration. But during flooding conditions, those large trees aren't like, they're not pumps that are removing thousands and thousands of gallons. It's over the course of the day. I, I can't tell you, Commissioner, if there would be a noticeable effect. I mean, just off the top, having forty trees that are soaking up water, it would be better than thirty whips soaking up water, right? You just know that anecdotally. But whether that would cause flooding, I, I don't necessarily believe so. But I can't quantify that at this point for you. But we do know the arborist is saying that these trees are hazardous.
Okay. I'll yield to Commissioner Farkey. I can tell he has some questions also.
Yeah, if you have any more, Commissioner Browski, please. Okay, I have like three quick questions, so it's nothing. So, Steve, who owns this land?
Township land, sir.
Okay, interesting. I never knew that the township owned that land. So they're going to clear cut this property. There are pretty much all of that in yellow. Or is it yellow or green?
Green, everything, yes. So basically, based on the arborist's report, he actually says, removing all trees.
Okay, so I guess there are other invasive species, and they'll do their best to weed them out. What is going to be the ongoing maintenance of this to make sure that these trees are going to be water and able to grow, and they're not going to get surrounded by invasives that could crowd out their sunlight?
So.
At a township thing, or is that a, sorry, or is that a horgan thing?
No, so just to be clear, when the contractor goes in, they're solely removing trees. They're not removing invasives or anything else other than the trees. That being said, the action of removing the trees is going to, is going to affect the ground cover, whether it be invasive or a native species. That should come back. But as far as maintenance, that doesn't fall under horgan. That's going to fall under our Public Works Department to make sure that the trees aren't overtaken. I think what you're asking is, you know, being overtaken by the ground cover. The one good thing with whips, they're hardier, but they're still going to require some watering. And that would be up to our Public Works guys to do.
And then just two points to what Commissioner Browski made. So I know that there's a stream that runs alongside, I guess, on the east side of, we'll say, the Blue Route, and then it kind of jets over. So that, so there, there won't be a, to your knowledge, that's not going to affect which way that the water's directed. It shouldn't flood over, correct?
So whatever the contours are of the existing ground are going to remain the same, right? They're not doing any grading. So however that ground is pitched, it's going to remain pitched to Commissioner Browski's question. Yes, are thirty mature, forty mature trees going to soak up more water over time than the whips? Right off the bat, yes. I can't quantify if that would cause, you know, any type of flooding or anything like that.
And then the, the final question to Commissioner Browski's point. And then maybe he can just give an update. So this is going to get clear cut, similar to what happened by the Blue Route or the, the entrance exit by the Blue Route. Can you just give us an update on, on, at least on that project with the planting of the wildflowers while we're here? Because I'm sure the residents are going to see two clear cut properties, as Commissioner Browski said, very close to one another. So just a timeline on that. So when we get hit with these questions, we can, it's probably going to be a bang, bang of what's up with, you know, here and what's up with the, by the off ramp.
So just a little quick background, you may recall that the Shade Tree Commission came forth with a plan. That plan involved Jonathan Alderson, landscape architect in Wayne, as well as Weeds Inc. And also the tree company that did some work for us previously, that based out of Aston. All Seasons Tree Company. They came forth with a pro bono plan. And that plan was to sow wildflower and wild grass seeds on the top and also do a frost seeding of additional wildflowers. All that has occurred. So if you look on the slopes, one of the first things they did was install the type L seed. All that grass is now established on those slopes. So this spring, we're going to be hoping to see the wildflowers and some of the meadow grass come up.
Okay.
That plan has been implemented, the one that was brought forth by Shade Tree and approved by this board.
Okay, well done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
If, if I could just jump in real quickly, just noting that, that, that same plan that the engineer just described also had to be approved by PennDOT, who owns that, that tract of land.
I, I just have a question about, you know, when you drive through that area, that parcel doesn't look, at this time of year anyway, doesn't look much different than the other three corners. Do we own the other land? Or is this the only parcel that's township owned?
Commissioner, this is the only one I'm aware of. When this came up, the Public Works Department did the research and found that we own this. I'm not aware of any other parcel that we do in that, on those corners.
Yeah, just to that, we, the township engaged a consultant roughly ten years ago to do a study on all the land owned by the township. And this was the only property on that that you're referring to that the township does own. And that was based on their study, which included property records, both here at the township building, down at the county. It was a pretty comprehensive review.
So is the same issue, do, can, do we know whether the same issue with the trees is happening on the other parcels that we don't own and, you know, will it have an effect on what we're doing here?
So Commissioner, on the parcels that we don't own, I mean, we don't manage those trees. So unless somebody called us about a tree in the right of way on a parcel that we don't own, we wouldn't be engaging in that. So in general, we're not going through other wooded areas that are privately owned, looking for, for issues.
Problems.
Responsibility. Well, they're the responsibility of the property owner.
Okay, that was all. Thank you.
Steve, what's, what's, um, what pot of funding is this coming out of?
The Shade Tree Fund.
Uh, no, sorry, Steve.
R and M maintenance.
Sorry about that. Comes out of the Township's General Fund, the money that's set aside annually for tree removal. And that's an important distinction because the money that goes into the Shade Tree Fund is never used to bring a tree down.
Right. So can, can, so can, how, can you break that down? How much is for the removal and how much is for replanting?
Yeah, so in the, in the memo, it noted that the price for, and thank you, Mr. White, by the way, sorry for that. In the memo, it's noted that it's $9,800 for horgan. And it will be not to exceed $1,000 to purchase the whips from Ocderera as well as the deer tubes. And they'll be all installed by our Public Works Department.
Can you at least use that thousand for replanting from the Shade Tree Fund?
What are you referring to, Commissioner Abel?
So the Shade Tree Fund is a fund set aside that, you know, Steve, you can go to, go into a better, but it's money that's given to the township annually from, I believe, Shanticleare to be used for planting. So I understand that the township has to pay to take trees down, but trees that are going up in, in the right of ways or in this, in this area, I think it's a good use of funds from the Shade Tree Fund.
Yeah, just real quickly on that, the Shade Tree Fund gets sources from, or gets its revenue from three different sources. The one Commissioner Abel just described, our donations from Shanticleare. This is also the fund, according to the Township Code, where all monies are deposited from any, any fines or payments in lieu of for trees that are taken down against the code. It also, it's a self-balancing account, as all of our funds are, so it does earn some interest. Although with interest rates being where they've been for the last decade, not much. And then the last piece is there have been a couple of years where the township has transferred general monies into this fund as well. But that, that has not been consistent based on, you know, the performance of the general fund and other, you know, all the other competition that exists for funding out of the general fund. So in any given year, the amount of money that's spent out of the Shade Tree Fund is, you know, twenty to fifty thousand dollars, sometimes a little bit more based on how much the general fund transferred. But to take a thousand out for the replanting here, I, I forget exactly what was presented at Shade Tree. We'll go back and double check to see what that conversation was to make sure that what we're doing is consistent with that. In either case, a thousand dollars, if it's the general fund, it's probably something we can handle, or it is appropriate to use the Shade Tree Funds in terms of strictly following the rules.
Well, if, if you have to go back now to Shade Tree, I mean, they've edited this quite a while ago, and they are, I mean, we've given Shade Tree the autonomy to, I think, designate the funding that we have for replanting trees around the township, and they are, I think, well into their plan for this year. So for the commissioners to say, we're going to change the decision, and now it has to come from the Shade Tree Fund. You know, without Shade Tree's involvement, to me, doesn't seem like the way to go, and.
I, I apologize. I wasn't clear. I meant go back to what was presented last May when Shade Tree had this conversation to see if that part of it was discussed. I didn't mean to, to hit the reset button on that part of the conversation.
It's, we're dealing with a thousand dollars here, that's it, correct?
On the.
So it's just one pocket or another. It's not like it's a bond issue or anything like that. We could easily move a thousand in or out of our Shade Tree Fund from the general fund, correct? Am I correct on that bill, or is there some kind of? Okay, I, I think, I don't know. I think it's a minor issue. We should.
Yeah, in fairness, in fairness, no Shade Tree, the commission uses up all of the money allotted to them on an annual basis. So a thousand dollars could change their plan by a couple of trees.
Has everyone seen all the trees that they planted in the parking lot up in North Wayne? It looks incredible. They've really done a fantastic job.
Yeah, I, I mean, if Shade Tree needs another thousand dollars bill, then I mean, that's something that's within your, you know, what is it, like seven thousand dollars you can move without board, without board approval? So that's something that, that's at your discretion, correct?
Uh, it, it is, although when it comes to Shade Tree and some of the, the other smaller boards and commissions that have their own kind of separate pot of money, we do like to bring those in front of the board.
And when, just sorry, because I know we should be moving on. What is Shade Tree's budget, though, for the year typically within?
Uh, well, the donations from Shanticleare range anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars on an annual basis. Maybe, maybe another thousand in interest income. And then really, the, the fines that were deposited into that fund over the years can vary. I mean, you could have many years with no fines at all, and then you could have one big property that puts several thousands of dollars into the fund. So that's really impossible to predict. So we're talking anywhere from twenty, twenty thousand, and then in the good years when we had the business tax revenues that would support it, the Board of Commissioners were transferring in. I'm going off memory here, so I could be off a little bit, but somewhere in the ballpark of another twenty to twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so we're dealing with less than, you know, anywhere between, we're dealing with between one to five percent. So it's minimal in my mind. So, thank you.
Mr. Northini, what is the downside of not doing anything with this parcel and letting nature take its course? Are there trees that are bordering Sproll Road, Spring Mill, and/or Conestoga that are in danger of falling? Is there some type of danger that's going on here? I'm just not understanding what, what the, the downside of just leaving this parcel alone and letting nature take its course.
So based on the arborist's report, he strongly notes that all of them are dead or declined. Sixteen to eighteen of the trees are likely to strike the road or adjacent property. So it's not just the street, it's that little property to the right, if you will, of the green area.
Okay, so there's danger then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I will so move for consent agenda item two F. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say, I'm sorry, is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Can I just make one? Steve, when we talked about this at Shade Tree, will we put something up on the website just so people who are not necessarily watching this and have not understood the conversation, remember we talked about putting a little blurb on the website so that people knew what was happening and the reason why it was happening?
Sure, Commissioner will work with Molly Gallagher, the Public Information Officer, and make sure something gets posted. And we could send that out to the commissioners so that if they wish to put that out to their constituents, maybe you reach a few more people and it'll let a few more folks know what is going on.
Great, thank you.
Moving for the balance of the consent agenda, items two A through E and G. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Consent agenda, with the exception of item F, passes unanimously. Moving on to committee reports. Item 3A, 231 Chimoni Road, right waiver of section 245-22 of the Stormwater Management Ordinance.
So Commissioner, this was before you at the regularly scheduled March 8th meeting. Mr. Padula is the applicant's engineer. So what had come from that meeting, the Board of Commissioners tabled a waiver request and required the applicant to come back with some form of stormwater runoff mitigation. They have done so, and I will let Mr. Padula in. If you could let him share his screen, and he can step through what him and the applicant are proposing for this site.
Sorry. Um, let me get the plan here. Okay, Ian, go and give me control.
Ian, could you let Mr. Padula share a screen, please?
Yeah, whenever you're ready, Mr. Padula.
Everybody can see that? Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, so as a result of the meeting, back on, I think it was March 8th, Commissioner Larkin asked us to provide some type of storm management in lieu of the infiltration. And he asked Steve and I to work together, come up with some solution that might be acceptable. What we did was we went in the back corner of the property here in the eastern part of the property, and we're creating a detention area. The water that's running from the back of the house into the eastern area would be detained and then allowed to pass through. What we're proposing is three rock, let me get a little, three rock filters through a berm, one foot wide each. So the water would come into this area, sit and drain towards these three rock areas, and then pass through the rock, filtered as it moves, and then move on in the direction in which it was, you know, previously draining. That's what we came up with. I think Steve, Steve agrees it. Well, I don't put words in Steve's mouth, but I think this is a viable solution to the requests made last meeting.
So to Mr. Padula's comment, this is a tough situation. And the fact that it doesn't perk, and there's many ways that somebody can add something, right? Additional stormwater management to try to make up for it. You can't infiltrate, so that's not going to be made up for. There are a lot of options to do things here, and I think this is a viable option as well.
So Steve and Mr. Padula, how, how does this affect the rate of discharge for various storms leaving the property? So for a ten-year, what effect does it have on it for, for a hundred-year storm? For example, what, what's, what's the effect of this? Does it make any difference?
It'll make a difference. We did not do an analysis for the storms. It's the, you know, their initial request was a waiver from stormwater management to allow the stormwater to, to flow from the site without control. Then the request was made to provide some type of stormwater. This will slow it down and allow it to continue to pass the way it was. But as far as quantifying ten-year storm, a hundred-year storm, we did not do that analysis.
Did you talk to Mr. DeGina about this proposed, and has he signed off, him and Robyn, have they signed off on, on this? Because it's going on your neighbor's property across his driveway.
We spoke to them just now. They came, I'm sorry, this is Carly Boyd.
Um, he came over to our house to speak with us because you reached out to him, Mr. Booker. And um, he, we, we talked to him about everything that we're showing him, and it's not changing any, it's if anything, it's lessening the rate of what is going on to his property. It's not, I mean, it's already going on to his property now, if I'm speaking correctly.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners. We we did have a nice conversation with John, actually, and we're actually going to be having a socially distant, you know, follow the line at some point to go through the whole plans with he and Rob, and we've had a great relationship with them out back and we take this seriously, and our our plan is not to treat that any differently now. So we, as we told him, and as he he said to us, we want to maintain a good relationship. So his his property is not really affected there because he only has a driveway in that slab. He said that the any stormwater runoff would be more across the driveway and into the other person's property. So what this is doing actually helps, you know, from, you know, speaking with Mark, is actually going to be a hopefully a better solution than what's there now, because there's not really a lot of options for us as to what we can, what we can do to help this. But but John and Robin have both signed off. They're both all good. And feel free to call them too. Again.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I I I trust you. I don't I am concerned though, because this is an increase in stormwater uh, due to the increase in impervious surface. And then the berm and the outfalls, we don't have an estimate of the both the increase in water and the detain, the detainage of the water uh, rate of discharge caused by this. And so I would agree, I expect, I would expect it probably slows it down, but you can't tell because you're adding additional impervious. So that's what my, I'm concerned about.
So Commissioner, just to to keep in things in context, this is roughly seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and thirty square feet of new impervious. So this would not qualify for our storm, our full blown stormwater management where we have rate control, water quality and all those great things. This would just be a pit dug in the ground, either filled with stone or some kind of chamber for infiltration based on one inch of rain over seven hundred and thirty square feet. So it's this isn't a this isn't full blown stormwater management when you get up to fifteen hundred square feet. So that that's where this falls into that lower tier. If that helps you put your arms around that.
So on the one hand, there's rules and the rules are the rules, and they're arbitrary to some extent, but we have to stick to them, and I totally understand that. But I'm also noticing that this is built on the old foundation, which means that if this were truly new construction, or even if they were just tearing this down to the the very base and starting from scratch, they would be controlling not just for the new impervious, but for all of the impervious on the side. Is that right?
That's correct. And that's where we started, Jack. We uh, we had additions proposed and everything, and we were over the limit, and we were going to have full blown stormwater. And when that wasn't an option, you know, Vince and Carly looked for options, they they could still build on the lot. And the only thing that really came was to tear down and build on top of the same foundation so we could be under the limit and still request the waiver.
Right. And like I said, the rules are the rules. That's how we set the system up. It's too late for us to complain about that. I do have to know, this is an area that is really, really badly hit by stormwater, and while I completely understand that the adjacent neighbors are not complaining, everything adds up when it pours into Gulf Creek, and the people who live right next to Gulf Creek, particularly that curb in Gulf Creek, get flooded out every time there's significant rains. So I'm not so much concerned about the next door neighbors. I'm concerned about the people who are downstream on Gulf Creek. I know I keep saying it, rules are rules, but at the same time, I'm also noting that to some extent the applicants are taking advantage of the fact that they are essentially building a new construction home, but they're not getting surcharged for stormwater as they would be if it were in fact new construction, and we're not being built on top of the old foundation. And then on top of that, we're of course adding new impervious in the form of the various additional materials. I don't know, I'm interested in hearing from the other Commissioners on this one. I I'm very conflicted about it.
Um, can somebody refresh my recollection? I understand that the house is going on the existing foundation. Is the patio that's creating the seven hundred and seventy-four extra square feet of impervious, is that replacing anything that's currently existing? Or is that just going over existing yard or other type of ground?
The patio is an addition. And then there's additions outside of the original footprint that yields that seven hundred and thirty that that Steve mentioned earlier.
Thank you.
Um, so I have a couple of questions. So that area, how deep is that trench going to be?
Six inches.
Okay, six inches. Okay. So if you're going to dig it six inches, could you possibly dig it three feet, five feet and and put some kind of holding tank in there? Because it's going to pass through there anyway. Um, just channel that water through a little channel to a larger vessel to hold it, and then they could pump it out uh, slower. But I don't know if six inches is going to make a big difference when we get to major storms, right?
The part of the issue that we have is we we're flat back here, so we go any deeper than what we're showing, we're below grade, we're not going to be able to let that water move through.
So if you put it in a tank and then pump it out, you can let it go through later, right?
If we did that, yes.
Okay.
But that's okay.
No, that's one option, correct?
It's possible to do that, yes.
Okay. Um, the other area is, or the other question I have, is that three, what is it, three hundred and ninety-one or three hundred and ninety-two square feet? Is that like a deck or is that stone?
Where where are we looking, sir?
Um, it says three, yeah, right there. Is that going to be an add on right there?
That's an elevation.
That's an elevation. So the, so they're adding seven hundred more square feet, correct? Give or take?
Right.
Okay, and is that, and what percent of that is the foundation and what percent is that like a patio?
Commissioner, the the foundation of the home and the new home don't count towards the new impervious. The applicant's new impervious is based on driveways, patios and walkways.
Okay. Um, so is there any of that patio that's outdoor that could instead of be stone, be wood? Because even though wood is considered impervious, there are typically slats where the water can drain through. Yes?
The patio is that grade.
The, okay, but it would still drain through. It's different than putting a piece of a stone on the ground, correct?
The the wood would be in contact with the ground and it would, it would rot.
So the wood, the wood would not be elevated at all?
No, it would not.
All right, is there, and there's no way to go any deeper than six inches?
Maybe an inch or two. I don't want to say no, but any, any, any significant depth, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, and what's the cost difference ballpark between the rock trench first putting a tank in? Significant? I mean, you're talking tens of thousands or what are we looking at?
Well, but what kind of tank are we talking about?
Uh, you're the expert.
Well, thank you. It depends on what you're talking about tank wise. I mean, significant, I'd say in order to, order of magnitude between five and ten thousand dollars, maybe more, depending on the size of the tank we're talking about.
So Mr. Padula, based on our ordinance, it's seven hundred and thirty square feet, you would have to have infiltrated one inch over that over that seven hundred and thirty square feet. So maybe that's the size tank the Commissioners are talking about. I just want to let the board know. Uh, myself and Mr. Padula went over many possible scenarios. One was the use of forest paving or forest walkways, things like that. In the end, though, so those porous items drain into a stone bed. And based on the infiltration rates, all that would happen is those stone beds would fill up, and there would be no infiltration. So you would be very limited to just the storage capacity of the stone, actually, the stone voids under the impervious. Now, I I can tell you that a following applicant to this uh, is doing more so than this, but they are working under the full blown stormwater management ordinance that kicks in at over fifteen hundred square feet. And uh, so Mr. Padula, just because Mr. Commissioner Sean Farley is going in this direction, um, if you were to do some type of subsurface system, uh, understanding the grades are tight with some type of outlet so that X cubic feet is stored and released over time, is that, and perhaps you go over and above the whatever the volume of seven hundred and twenty-two square feet over an inch is. I mean, we discussed some of these, but I'd like Commissioners to hear that discussion a little bit.
Well, that would, that would, like you said, Steve, that's what we discussed was providing one inch of of volume storage, right, for the square footage of increase. And that's what this, this, this depression has been sized to handle, is that one inch. At seven hundred and thirty square feet, you're looking at requiring sixty cubic feet of storage. I'm just trying to figure out the um, the volume of that. So quick, quick in my head, I would say a twenty foot length of twenty-four inch pipe would provide sixty cubic feet. Steve, would you agree that area with twenty-four inch pipe is about three point one four, twenty feet, three times twenty, sixty?
Yes.
Took seven thirty and divided it by twelve, that gives you the cubic feet of volume for one inch of runoff. So to answer your question about a tank underground, picture a twenty, twenty foot length of twenty-four inch plastic pipe. If I guessed, maybe on the high end, three hundred dollars for the pipe. Yeah, hold on, let's, let's say twenty-four dollars a foot times twenty.
Would you be able to drain that to grade without using a pump? Because a pump is a scary situation.
Right, well, that was the expression we had was provide that volume on the surface while still providing positive discharge, so the water can be detained at that sixty cubic feet. But it also has a positive discharge, so it's not trapped underground that could cause all kinds of other conditions.
Can I ask just two more quick questions? Would hedges do better than a little rock garden? Or not?
I'm glad you asked that question. We were, we're posing a water tolerant seed mix in that area as well.
Okay. And then one more question. So they're asking, so it's Steve, if I'm correct, if it's fifteen hundred square feet, they have to go through the, all the the hoops. Am I correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so they're at seven hundred. I'm just going to round it and say seven fifty. Um, so let's say the Boyd's want to do another project next year and it's eight hundred square feet. Um, is there a grandfathering effect or when? I mean, and I, and trust me, like, I know the Boyd's, I I know them to be honest, good people. But I just, so I know um, they don't have, or so anyone can just piecemeal these projects out to avoid it. That's my
We have a, we have a one year look back, Commissioner.
Okay.
So when they come in for a permit, we would look back one year.
Okay, so it's a one year look back, and so you can piecemeal it out, but it's got to be uh, post one year. Uh, with that said, Vince and Carly, are you looking to do any more projects in the next year or two?
Do you think we want to do this again?
We're not, we have no plans. This is it. We want to make this where we want to grow old and never ever leave. Like, we're not like
Got it.
This is it.
All right, and 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 for disclosure, Vince and I shared a bunk at Camp Canada, that's us, correct? Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to jump in just a couple more questions. I guess I'm, you know, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to get you within the boundaries of, um, you know, what's allowable without even, you know, seeking this exceptional waiver. So what, is there currently a patio now that you'll be taking out to replace with something better or it's damaged in your?
No, there's no terrace there now.
There's no terrace now. So if I'm understanding this correctly, and please, experts, please jump in. You know, it's the, it's the driveway patio and other sort of hard surfaces that are being laid down um, that are causing this problem. So have you gone back to the drawing board and figured out if you wouldn't mind having a gravel walkway instead of a an asphalt or a driveway instead of an asphalt one, or some other materials that do allow for um, some, you know, control of of water runoff so that you don't have to um, confine your plans, but just look at the different materials. Um, it seems to me that the patio is causing great problems. Can you shrink the size of the patio? Can you change the materials of the driveway and the walkways? Um, you're using the footprint of the house, so obviously, um, there's no expanded ground there. So I'm just positing solutions to get you to where you want to go by making adjustments to the plan.
Commissioner, if I could address one of the comments you made there, the a stone driveway or a stone patio counts under your code the same as asphalt and hardscape. There's no, there's no difference between stone and asphalt under the code.
Does it act differently in real life regardless of the code?
It 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 does to a certain extent. Uh, when you have a property that doesn't perk, at the end of the day, it doesn't perk, and nothing goes into the ground, uh, you know, officially goes into the ground, uh, when it fails a perk. So it it wouldn't react any differently, but in in some cases it does. But most codes, most townships, their codes count stone and hardscaping the same as as asphalt.
So Commissioner, when you
Steve, can I ask you to comment on that? Thank you.
Yeah, so Commissioner, uh, I concur with Roger. So our code does call a a stone driveway, an impervious driveway, and there's actually reason for that, because over time the voids in the stone do fill up, and you will see runoff come off a driveway. And more importantly, because this lot doesn't infiltrate, even if you were to use, I had mentioned this before, if you were going to use uh, porous asphalt over the driveway, so the water can get through the asphalt, uh, where the activity occurs is in the underlying stone bed. At Clemecron Park, we have a twenty-four inch stone bed under our forest walkways, and the ground does perk. So it goes into that bed, and then it goes into the ground. In this case, you could which you would normally do, you could put a twenty-four inch stone bed under the driveway. In a heavy rain, it's going to fill up and sit there, and then it's just going to run off the driveway. So the use of porous or permeable materials really ends with the stone bed that's underneath filling up, and then that material acting just like impervious.
Does a lot, does your yard flood now? Question to the Boyd's?
Yes. It doesn't drain. It doesn't drain. It just sits there.
Just sit. So there's not a, you know, it doesn't take a day to
No, so even like even the plan that Mark and I think Steve have come up with here collectively, like, we have our our children's swing set there, and if we do this, we're going to probably have to, I mean, because it, so it floods, um, that tree upper left. So we have a swing on that tree, and it floods like right, right, right near where the cursor is right now. It floods there in a heavy rainstorm, so we can't move the swing set there. We're not going to put it in the middle of the yard because the middle yard behind the house is flat, and my father, who's seventy-two, like, his dream is to play football with the kids once he recovers from his back surgery. So with like, that's like the only flat spot. So with like, that's like the only flat spot really like over there, but we have a swing where it pulls on that tree. So we can't put the swings at there because that it's a tree swing like on a rope. I don't know if you can picture it, but I mean, it has a huge radius that the kids and their friends, you know, like to swing around. So the only place for us to have a swing set because the entire front of our property is sloped towards the house is where it is now. But if we do this, I told Mark, I go, we're gonna have to get rid of the swing set, and I get the kids are growing fast. I mean, our youngest is five, so he's probably only got, you know, six or seven more years using the swing set anyway. But it just stinks because, yeah, it doesn't, our property doesn't drain because of the way it's shaped and it just floods. So this is, you know, we take this seriously. We're not, we don't want to create problems for anybody, you know? We have friends who they're they've lost their bridge, you know, they have a place down on Shimonie near uh Fenimore. And they really worry about flooding, so like we take this seriously and we want to come up with a a solution here. Um hence the reason we're here with all of you, you know?
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that. I think we're, you know, we're all just struggling to get to a solution that um. Will allow you to go forward and will not um cause more problems with what is the major issue here in our township these days.
Yeah. We understand that and we appreciate it. We've just struggled to come up with options with the plot that we happened to purchase a few years ago, you know?
So Commissioners, if I can give you an example, other than the top soil on this lot. Right, there's a few inches of top soil that may may take a little bit of water. It's without the infiltration, it's almost like an impervious lot. I'm not saying it's the same as asphalt, but that's that's what you're dealing with. You're dealing with something that's not going to soak up water. That's why these types of uh solutions are so challenging.
Can I just ask two more questions? Roger, what's the difference in cost between putting some kind of underground? Um vessel in versus what the. What the um cost is for the, I'm gonna call it a rock garden.
I think as Mr. Padola stated, uh he ran through some costs.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Padola, what, do you have that difference?
Well, like I said, um it a piece, I I was wrong. It's not three hundred. I figured twenty-four dollars a foot is about five hundred dollars for a piece of twenty-four-inch pipe. Um the vi- the volume provided by a twenty-four-inch pipe is roughly sixty cubic feet. Uh one inch of runoff off the seven hundred and fifty square feet is about the same amount. So a piece of twenty-four-inch, twenty twenty-foot-long twenty-four-inch pipe buried underground is about five hundred dollars. This grading, you know, I told I told Vince the other day, I said, you know, you could probably do all the grading and seeding and everything for less than five thousand. So yeah, burying the pipe, if you're gonna bury the pipe in stone, I I think they're about the same.
Okay, so the other, so the other uh remedies, way to remediate this is gonna be different grass seed?
Well, that's, we're proposing a a water-tolerant grass seed.
Okay, and then is there anything that you could add to the soil to get that to drain better?
No, because we would if we could. Uh again, I think you summarized it really nicely is the top soil in in soil. You heard Steve say before, when you have storage in rockets in the voids, and it's typically about forty percent. In soil, that void goes down to about fifteen percent. So if you ta- take four or six inches of top soil and multiply that by point one five, that's the volume of storage you have. If we had any kind of soil there, from the surface up, we'll get some volume restorage. But then you're just gonna get soggy, more more soggy ground.
All right, okay, thanks. Uh one more thing. Um no, that's 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 it. Um thank you to Carly and Vince. I know that you, most of the people come here and they don't care about their neighbors. I genuinely can tell that you do and and thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
I'm not sure that we want to say that most people who come to us don't care about their neighbors, particularly. Two more of these after this, but I appreciate the effort that you guys have put into this.
Thank you.
Steve, um Steve, Steve, if if that, if an applicant came and their ground a- and they, the yard does perk. Would this proposal be suitable for that yard?
So Commissioner, if their ground met our infiltration requirements, there wouldn't be an option. They would meet the, they would put a system in that uses groundwater. So we're talking about infiltrating groundwater, right? It's a volume reduction. You're taking stormwater that comes in and you're trying to put it into the groundwater. You're reducing the volume of runoff. On a lot like this, they're not able to reduce the volume of runoff, right? They cannot infiltrate. So if your lot met the infiltration requirements, it wouldn't be a discussion. It would be a, you know, they would dig their pit, fill it with stone or chambers, and away they would go, or any applicant. So we don't have a requirement when you can't meet this. Uh when you can't meet the infiltration requirements. You're gonna see on six fifty-nine Church Road, which requires full-blown stormwater management. The engineer has proposed something uh very different from this. And you're gonna see on the third one where they're proposing rain barrels, if memory serves me correctly. So there isn't a requirement that they do that as something we ask them to do. And there's nothing in our code that says, okay, if you don't infiltrate, here's what you must do. So that's why there's all these various options. But again, I think everybody needs to understand if your ground doesn't infiltrate, once you go below the top soil. Runoff is just running off that soil.
So another question about the the remediation that you are planning. So how um explain to me a little bit more um about um sort of the volume of. Water that would be offset by something that you're proposing.
We're providing about approximately sixty cubic feet of storage. I think it's a little more than that in that area. That's one inch of runoff over the uh increase in impervious surface. That was the criteria that we graded that to.
Thank you.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Nay. Motion passes four to three. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Moving on to.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Moving on to item six fifty-nine Church Road, waiver of section two forty-five dash twenty-two of the Stormwater Management Ordinance.
So Commissioner, I'm gonna toss this off to the applicant's engineer, Rob Lambert, but just very briefly. The applicant in the memo, I noted it, applicant is proposing to construct a building addition and associated driveway expansion and walks totaling. Totalling three thousand four hundred and forty-two square feet of new impervious. This lot also has no ability to infiltrate it at zero inches per hour. And uh you'll see at the bottom of the memo in quotes from Mr. Lambert, to compensate for the zero infiltration rate. The stormwater management design proposes a subsurface detention basin to manage the post-development runoff peaks and provide water quality benefits. To control the added impervious area, the detention basin will capture the proposed roof area as well as the existing roof area. So they're going over and above. The basin will slowly discharge through a four-inch orifice orifice to a six-inch pipe. Which will connect to the existing inlet on Church Road, and water quality benefits are provided by the retention volume that is stored before being released. So then I will toss it over to the applicant or their engineer, Rob Lambert, who I saw is on.
Good evening, Rob Lambert here for the applicant. I think Steve um did a very good job describing it. Uh we have uh done permeability tests in two different locations on the site. Uh that really the kind of two ends of the site and found very similar results. There's a signs of high groundwater, um and the soils did not have any percolation uh available. So we have a full uh underground subsurface stormwater system for all the rates. Um and met all the rate requirements, and luckily in this location, we do are, we are able to connect to the public uh stormwater collection system. I'd be happy to share my screen. There we go here. So you can see Church Road is on the left-hand side. Uh the existing stormwater inlet you can see is in approximately this location. Uh there is a subsurface stormwater system uh to the east of the existing house, just downhill of the existing pool. Um and we have lots of collection uh running to that system from both the existing house. And the proposed addition, a portion of the existing house will be removed uh to build the the addition. I'd have to answer any questions you have.
Can I, so to the point that you just made, um Mr. Lambert, and thank you very much for being here. Um you said you already have a lot of water that's collecting. Can you go back to that one statement that you said? About the the stormwater collection system, you already have a lot of water that's already.
We're collecting a lot of the existing, so the existing house that is completely uncontrolled right now and simply runs. Um off, uncontrolled off of the property, um we're actually collecting that. So we'll collect existing roof drains that formerly ran free um and be able to control that water.
Okay, and this is just a, this is just a basin?
Correct, correct. It's a, it's built the same, i- i- if we were able to get perk test, we would. Basically propose the same basin, might be slightly modified, but it's going to be basically the same basin. We would actually just have the permeability.
So if this collects and there's no permeability, will it, would it fill up faster and?
So, so the discharge from this system is the four-inch pipe that Mr. Nercini referenced. Um what happens is, uh and I try to describe the storm basins like a bathtub. If you filled your bathtub with a fire hose and had the outlet at the bottom, right, the bathtub's gonna fill up really fast. It's kind of the same idea here is is that if you, that we have a a small outlet that's letting the water out into the system. All of the water from the house is going to get uh into the stormwater system. The system's gonna fill up, but it's only letting out that small amount at the bottom.
And can I ask my board colleagues, who is this, whose ward is this, Jack? Is this your ward? Which I'm like not a hundred percent oriented as to where this is on Church Road.
So this is right at the five-point intersection. If you look right here, the township.
Oh, okay.
Here's Aberdeen, this is Conestoga Road going left to right.
And no.
Gotcha, so that, I think that's sixth ward, is that Jake's ward? I'm just wondering what the flooding si- can uh situation is in this area.
The Commissioner.
I think I.
About this system is, whereas the previous. Uh the previous applicant before you, very flat lot, hard to discharge. And a lot of times we don't necessarily uh allow folks to discharge into the inlet. But in this case, I think it would be prudent. So even as Mr. Lambert said, so this is basically storage, right? It's a big underground storage area. The good thing is it will discharge, what does discharge through the four-inch orifice to a six-inch pipe. Will go to an existing inlet, so it's conveyed in that fashion. As opposed to the previous applicant where, you know, it's it's gonna be just going over land. At least in this case, it's got somewhere to go.
And if I could add to that, it's we're discharging at a slower rate than what what it currently does now uncontrolled.
Thank you. I'm done. Is, is this house being renovated by the current owner or is it um developed for sale?
Uh it's for the current owner.
Okay, um I will so move, is there a second? Excellent. Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to item three D, eight twelve slash eight twenty-two Glenbrook Avenue. Oh, sorry, item three C, two thirty-five Pembroke Avenue, waiver of section two forty-five dash twenty-two of the Stormwater Management Ordinance. I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um if we have the applicant, we'll hear from them, otherwise Steve Gercini.
So the applicant was invited, but again, very similar situation. Um there is approximately three thousand four hundred square feet of new impervious. The applicant is required to request a waiver from the groundwater to recharge because their lot does not infiltrate to our requirements. Uh they noted that they dug test pits and all failed with a permeability of zero. In addition to the waiver request, the applicant must address the following items, the grading permit reviews. Um Robert Wager, who is a design engineer. Uh he notes in his letter, the applicant is requesting waivers from this section. And the applicant proposes the installation of a rain garden to meet the requirements of rate control, right? So they, they cannot meet the infiltration requirements, that they can't do. But they're proposing to use a rain garden to meet the requirements of the rate control, which is one of our requirements along with water quality. And others as part of our stormwater management ordinance. So Mr. Wager, are you on tonight?
Steve, I don't believe he is on. He, I just tried to bring him up and I don't think he got the email. I personally received it today. Um so I represent the applicant. Um I'm Matthew Pallino. I guess you guys can see that. Um so Bob isn't here, but um we are proposing a rain garden. The purpose of the rain garden obviously will um. To address the rate control portion of the uh stormwater management. And the rain garden also um helps with respect to um. The rain garden consists of a a basin, as you imagine, and it also has several feet of um. Of so amended soil mixture at the bottom, which will absorb water. And the plantings in the rain garden are designed um to soak this water up. So rather than the water absorbing into the ground like normal infiltration. The rain garden sort of takes the opposite approach and um the water gets absorbed into the plants. That are um planted within the rain garden. And it um helps achieve the the if, the desired effect where we have no infiltration. Um capabilities such as this uh property. And um that's, I guess, a short summation of the rain garden concept.
Um Mr. Mr. Pallino, if you could just describe for the board that this is a new home, could you just step through what you're planning on doing to the lot?
Um, well, it's almost just, you almost described it for me, but there's an existing lot there and we're proposing to build. Um a small home, it fits the site. It doesn't require any variances in terms of size or impervious. Other than the fact that anything you would do on that property will not um meet the stormwater requirement. Because there is no perk. Um the hu- the the home has um been reviewed by HARP so far. And HARP did uh give it a certificate of appropriateness in that respect. So um the next step in the permitting process is in fact the uh dealing with. The uh waiver requirement of the stormwater management ordinance.
So Commissioners, our our ordinance does not allow for credit if you remove impervious. So just for context, uh roughly twenty-seven hundred square feet of impervious is going to be removed. And roughly thirty-five hundred square feet of what we will call new impervious is going to be constructed as part of the house. Walkways and driveway, and due to that quantity. They're required to meet our full-blown stormwater management ordinance, which we spoke of. And again, they're proposing a rain garden to address this.
Can I ask some questions? So Steve, there's gonna be a net gain of impervious, correct?
Correct.
And and based on our ordinance, it's not a net gain, it is just thirty-five hundred. And, and based on our ordinance, it's not a net gain, it is just 3,500 square feet of new.
Okay, I mean, yeah, just, but that may have, that may be how the ordinance reads. I'm just looking at the math.
So the net gains around 700 square feet. The net gains around, if, if, using your scenario, the net gains around 700 square feet of impervious. Right.
And how big was the house and how big is gonna, is the new house gonna be?
So there was no house there, but there was a long driveway that leads back to an existing garage that is going to be removed. So there's existing blacktop, an existing blacktop driveway and about 140 feet of it or so will be removed.
Okay.
And not be replaced.
Okay, so this is just removing, removing a garage or is it building a house?
It's removing an existing driveway. So there, the, there's existing driveway that will no longer be needed. So that will be removing the 2,700 square feet of impervious that exists now in the form of blacktop paving that will not go back with the new, with the new home.
Okay, and the rain garden, where's, how big's the rain garden gonna be?
Um, well, dimension-wise, it is-
And I'm trying to find this on the packet and I just don't, sorry.
Would, would you like me to share my screen? I have the-
Yeah. But the rain gardens-
What Roger's gonna show you is a rain garden that has a, it's a bowl, if you will, with a bottom elevation of three sixty-eight, a top of three seventy.
So where the, where the cursor is here is the rain garden location. This is the proposed house. There is an existing garage at the rear of the property with a driveway that extends all the way to the street. That driveway is being cut right around here at the back of the house. New house will be constructed and the rain garden in the front yard.
Okay, so the rain garden's gonna be in the front yard. Okay, and the new owners or the owners are gonna be happy looking out in front of us, seeing a rain garden?
Yes, a rain garden is not cosmetically unappealing. They're planted nice and they're not very deep. They, they, they're not like what you might see in a shopping center or something like that where you see a ten-foot deep dish or something like that. It's, there's two feet of elevation change, so over quite a large area. It's really as wide as the house. So it's not drastically deep and it will be planted with grasses and such and other perennials and other landscapes such that it is not unappealing.
Thanks.
Um, we just heard from two other applicants with two other plans for stormwater management. Did you consider the underground basin style for this property?
Um, we did. The, the thing the underground basin won't do that the rain garden does do is sort of help with the, the infiltration through the amended soils. It, that amended soil will hold the water until the plants help soak it up. So that's the reason we would propose the rain garden. Quite honestly, we could dig and do a basin, but we would not be contributing anything towards the infiltration requirement. And I, I am not the engineer, but maybe Roger or Steve can chime in. I was under the impression that the DEP, BMP sort of recommends the use of a rain garden as one of the alternatives when you don't have infiltration. As opposed to just digging this hole and putting pipes or stone in it because once the hole fills up with water, it's just gonna stay in there. So it's sort of self-defeating, but the rain garden does actually take some of this water and make it sort of stay on site.
The commissioners, as I noted, and I thank Roger for bringing this up. This rain garden's about two feet deep, right? There's a three seventy top and a two, three sixty-eight bottom. So there are two feet and Mr. Pallino, there, there are benefits to a rain garden. But again, we just have to understand, even with the amended soils that he's gonna, proposing to install, once they're through those amended soils, it stops. There is no infiltration. Again, same thing as with the other lots, under the topsoil, the water is gonna run off to, you know, I'm not gonna say it's like asphalt, but it's something that will run off. So this, this developer has proposed a rain garden. There's, our ordinance doesn't say you must do X, Y, or Z. They're trying to meet it in a way, in a different way. They cannot meet the infiltration requirements nor does this, nor can any of the applicants. This is their proposal to do so.
Um, do rain gardens last forever?
There's a maintenance aspect that goes along with them where you have to, you know, the, the plants have a, have an obvious life cycle and you have to replant them over time. And every once in a while, go in there and till up and mix up the amended soils. So they're not, they're not maintenance-free, but they're fairly low maintenance.
The benefit to a rain garden is as well in that regard is that you sort of know when it's not working, when you have the pipes buried underground. Honestly, you really don't know that they're not working. The system could be sitting there full of water and no one really knows it. So they all sort of have maintenance, I think.
Can I ask about, I'm sorry, was it, was anyone else gonna go to, do you mind if I ask a question? Um, can I ask about the safety of this? So it's two feet deep, right? It looks like, I'm looking at this, it looks like it's in the front yard, correct? Am I orienting right to this plan?
Right.
So it looks like it's in the front yard. It seems like it's pretty close to the street. From what I can see and I'm, it's super small, so I apologize. Um, you know, and I, you know, I like rain gardens. I think that they're a good option when, you know, people have a small amount of water that, you know, a smaller amount is, or a smaller amount of impervious they need to address. This seems like a lot of impervious that needs to be addressed by a, by a rain garden. And I'm just, I'm just concerned about, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm wondering about safety of this. You're kind of, what is the, is it safer to have something like this that could potentially be filled up with two feet of water? You said that, you know, they sometimes can fail if they're not conveying. Is it safer to have something that's buried underground? This may seem like an odd question. I just, I've never seen one like such a large one so close to the street and in somebody's front yard.
There's actually ones larger than this outside of the township building.
Outside the township?
Yeah, outside the township building, along, along the street by the parking lot. Probably larger than this.
Uh, Creek Drive, it goes by the police and back to the apartment buildings. And again, Clement designed them as part of the parking lot expansion. Some years ago.
And how is that one working today?
So every rain garden has a, has a limit. It's finite. So if it's a big enough rain, that rain garden will fill up and it will overflow, right? If it's a huge drain, that's, that's going to happen. They, they can only, the amended soils only take so much. So there are capacities to these, but they will work better in the smaller storms. But if there's a, a deluge, you, you can see that rain garden or any rain garden fill up for that matter.
Or anything would fill up, right?
I'm sorry. Yes, any, any basin would fill up under, under the larger, larger storms.
No, I answered my safety question.
Yeah, sorry Lisa, I think I cut that off, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna- I'm gonna bump that back up because I'd like to hear the safety answer.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, Steve, I know you mentioned there's the ones over by the township building. You know, do they fence these off? Like what's the-
I, and I don't want to speak for codes, but I, I believe, so like a pool has to have a fence, but I think there's a depth of water requirement of like four feet. This is two feet. Our, as Roger noted, our rain gardens on Creek Drive are longer and deeper than this and they are not fenced off.
In theory, they're not intended to be a wet pond. That in theory that it's, it's just this, a depression with, with trees and plants and greenery in it. During the, during the rain events, they will fill up and there's an overflow pipe on them to control the overflow.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Stat comment? Public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed nay?
Aye.
Nay.
Motion fails five to two. Guys, you are free to come back and present to us a plan that has, I'm assuming from the questions that we got, additional stormwater management facilities embedded into it. But we're done for that, for today with this topic. Thank you very much. Moving to item 3D, eight twelve to eight twenty-two Glenbrook Avenue, caucus final land development plan. Mr. Knigley, I saw you just came on camera. Is this yours?
It is, thank you, Mr. Larkin.
I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Knigley, take it away. It is all yours. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, uh, this is a property located at the corner of Bryn Mawr Avenue, Glenbrook and County Line. It's across the street. Basically, it starts across the street from the Wawa there on Bryn Mawr Avenue. This was granted preliminary approval by this board back in March of 2020. Since that time, we have been in the process with DEP for an exemption for the store module. Since this does not proceed toward Renterhamford Marple, it goes the other way towards Cops Creek. The exemption has been approved by DEP. We are just waiting for confirmation from downstream certification on that issue, which clearly would be a condition of any approval that we receive. That approval, which we received email saying that will be granted. It's just a matter of getting through the process. This, you may recall, this was a rehab of three buildings. Actually, one building was removed and torn down. Two of the buildings have been rehabbed. This is the final building to be rehabbed. It is exactly on the same footprint, is not increasing any impervious coverage. And in fact, the stormwater management system has already been installed and that system was designed to control the runoff, not only for the two buildings that have been already constructed, but this third building as well. So we're here this evening asking for approval. There's, the only waiver required is the one requiring 500 feet from the, that indication of 500 feet of all monuments and such items within 500 feet of the site. An aerial map has been submitted as part of this plan and that's the only waiver. We don't have any issues with any of the review letters as well. It was approved by the planning commission during their meeting. I guess it was in March and it was also recommended approval by the Delaware County Planning Commission with no comments.
Commissioner comment, if any. This is caucus, so we're not taking ass, action, but now it's time to ask questions.
So Nick, it's, this is, there was a daycare and two apartments and now it's going to three apartments?
No, there wasn't a daycare, Rich. Is that, Rich had asked that?
Yeah.
Yeah. There wasn't a daycare. It was two apartments and there were commercial underneath. So the commercial's been removed and we're going to three apartments. Same footprint. No increase in, in gross square footage actually also.
And, oh, Rich, Rich, one second. Hey, Nick, Nick in our notes, it says it was a-
Was it daycare?
Two residential units and a daycare.
Tim, are you aware that, was there a daycare in there? Tim Rubin's on, the owner.
That's what was included in the application.
Oh, is it? Then I'm, okay. I wasn't aware that was-
Some time ago.
Yeah, Tim, do you any, any idea when that daycare was in there?
Nick, these, these spaces have not been occupied for decades. So it's entirely possible that was a daycare back in the seventies or sixties. I, I don't know. The last use, I think, might have been a thrift shop, but I'm, I'm not 100% sure. It was long before we bought it.
I think it was the, the last use was sort of the sorting or donation drop-off for the Bryn Mawr thrift store, which is across the street, the back of Bryn Mawr thrift store.
Correct.
Across the street from this property. And I will, I'll just note that the, the existing development that has already been done there is a great improvement on that corner. And I would encourage the board to see their way to approving this. I think it's a good addition to the area.
What's the square footage of each of these new apartments?
Tim? I, I can tell you that each apartment is a two-bedroom, two-bath and I'm gonna say it's approximately, we don't have our final plans, but I'd say approximately 700, maybe eight, eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty feet maybe is what they'll end up being, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So, so you're putting a garage underneath?
Yeah, part of the condition was to add a parking space to, to get that additional unit. So yes, we're actually adding two enclosed parking spaces.
So two enclosed, so you're taking, and then these, the apartments are one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
They're all two bedrooms, two bedroom, two bath.
Okay.
Tim, I'm sorry Sean, there, there, I think parking's already provided on the site for, according to code, for the other units. I just needed two because they were adding an apartment unit. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you know, I think maybe that's what you're trying to get in there.
Yeah, no, so, so the parking is, is gonna be sufficient. Are these gonna be student housing eligible? Is this gonna be student housing eligible, this, uh, this, um, new, these, these three new units?
Nick, do you want to answer whether they're eligible? I mean, it wouldn't be our desire necessarily, since these are ground-up, newly constructed, market rate, I'll call them class A apartments. That would not be our first choice, but I can't speak to legality. Nick, do you want to answer that?
Well, I saw Kevin just log in, so.
Okay.
Commissioner, this was three units, so it would be considered multifamily and not eligible for, I'm sorry, it would be eligible for student. We would not regulate the student status, tenant status in here.
Okay, would you write that out, that it's not eligible for student housing? Would you write that into the, any kind of plan that you have?
Are you, you're talking to me?
I'm talking to either you or your lawyer, yeah.
Oh, my, my preference would be, I, I mean, unless that's an absolute necessity, I prefer not to only because I wouldn't want to be limited. I mean, we're, we're good property managers. I think you can talk to anybody. We run first-class business. I wouldn't want to preclude us necessarily, especially given that we have an amazing relationship with Bryn Mawr College, pre-med, post-bac and things like that. I mean, I'd really prefer not to do that.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's something that you would prefer not, not to do. Okay, um, I'm gonna have, I just want to hear what the other commissioners have to say and then I'll probably want to jump back in, some more questions.
Oh, go through a little bit more on the parking, because that's a bad parking area right there. So you're adding two new spots for three apartments?
Yeah, we're, no.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Rich, we, we have, we're compliant with the parking for the two apartments. We're adding two new spots because we're adding a third apartment. The approval originally was for two apartments on this site. Zoning board granted us relief to add a third apartment. Everything was compliant, but since we're adding that third apartment, we were required to add two additional parking spaces and that's why we're adding two additional parking spaces.
And those are under the, under the building?
Correct.
Correct.
Are they accessed off of the main road there or do you go behind?
The main Glenbrook, they front on- The main Glenbrook, they front on Glenbrook. What the requirement for the for our units was to do two parking spaces per unit, regardless of whether it was a one or a two bedroom. So I can tell you that the back parking field actually has a lot of empty spaces in it right now because there's a lot of our tenants that either commute or have one car. So if you go back, if you go by Brenmore Avenue and you look back there on any given day, you'll see the lots probably half full. So in a way, we're we're parked per code, but but operationally, we're overparked.
Let me jump back in if you're done with just a couple more questions. So you're going to redevelop this and the in the past, when you redevelop a building and keep it for apartments, do you typically try to sell them as as investment properties or do you keep them and use them for rentals?
Typically, the latter. We've held everything. Yeah. You never say never because a lot of it, you know, to be candid, is market driven. But everything we've done so far, we've held on to and it it's our strategy to to hold and self manage.
Okay, so that being said, when you have turned a property, you have not flipped any of them. The properties, all the properties that you have, you have not flipped any of them. Am I correct?
That's correct. The only properties that we've sold were some medical office buildings further down on Haverford Road.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Just one, one more here. This is caucus. So Nick, the only waiver you need is the waiver from the plan requirement of showing physical objects 500 feet from the site.
That is correct.
Is there anything else that's questionable, gray area?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I don't know, Roger. There's nothing else on any of the comment letters and nothing that I've seen.
No, everything else is code compliant pending the receipt of the planning approval from the DEP and the downstream conveyance facilities.
And and just reiterating, the township will not review who's renting these. This is totally outside the purview and anybody, there won't be any restrictions on that. That's what the so Commissioner Fari asked if you would limit it to not students. And you said, well, I don't want to unless it's absolutely necessary. So that means you, if it's absolutely necessary, you would limit it and exclude students, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it hasn't come up before, and I can tell you that we manage the the two adjacent properties. We've had them leased for two years and it's first class operation. We build great product, but I just really would prefer not to limit. Given where we're located, I'd really prefer not to limit myself again. I mean, you could judge me by, we have a track record with you all and we do a great job.
We don't need to spend a lot of time talking about this. If they aren't going to get their waiver from us to draw the additional objects, they're just going to come back with a plan. It's a buy right plan that shows all the objects. I mean, I assume that you would pay your engineer or your surveyor the couple of extra thousand bucks you need to rather than foreclosing your option to rent to students. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
And just, just so everybody's aware, this is final plan approval, preliminary plan approval was granted a year ago. So there's no waiver in it, but it was granted a year ago. So they're set with the plan that's in front of you with the one waiver. And it's just.
Okay, I feel much more comfortable voting for it if undergrad student housing was restricted. That's just me.
Great. Guys, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Moving to item three E Hamilton Estate Eagle Road Caucus Preliminary Land Development Plan. Mr. Brosman, I think this is you.
Good evening, Commissioners George Brosman, representing the applicant. We're here with some of our team, including Rob Lambert. This is a preliminary plan and it's just for caucus. I'll make a couple of comments and turn it over to Mr. Lambert to walk you through the plan. This property is in the R4 district. It's essentially a buy right plan. It complies with the R4 requirements. It has received the recommendation for preliminary plan approval from the planning commission. And I believe it has also been in front of the shade tree commission. Of course, we'll be back for final approval if we get the preliminary approval. With that, I'll have Rob Lambert walking through the plans.
Good evening again. Can you hear my screen? Good evening. This is Rob Lambert with Site and Hearing Concepts. The subject property is located near the intersection of Strafford Avenue and Eagle Road. So on the right hand side of this plan, you can see Eagle Road going across the bottom is Strafford. The property is T shaped. There is actually a piece that comes out to Strafford. It's an arrow piece that won't be developed, but is part of the parcel. The bulk of the property is off of Eagle Road and comes in. It's an undeveloped, currently undeveloped piece of property. What we're proposing to do is this plan's in the same orientation, Eagle Road, top to bottom, Strafford Avenue, right to left. This is the same plan that's superimposed on a on an aerial image, just so everyone can see it. We're proposing to construct a cul-de-sac off of Eagle Road, very similar to West Wayne Avenue that you can see to the top of the page. So very similar to that. Build a cul-de-sac and construct nine dwellings. Each one of these dwellings has extensive stormwater management. We're controlling all the stormwater for the proposed cul-de-sac and the houses. And so there's actually two stormwater basins on each one of the properties, one in front of the house, one behind. There are subsurface stormwater systems. We've done permeability tests and the permeability passed. So we were able to get infiltration. We have improvements along Eagle Road. We're providing a sidewalk along Eagle and a sidewalk all the way along the new cul-de-sac up to the cul-de-sac bulb. Obviously, you can see the landscaping that's proposed. It's a relatively, relatively straightforward application. The one waiver we are asking for was the similar waiver to the previous applicant for additional features within 500 feet. We do show features within 500 feet. We've provided that information to the township. If they would like, the township staff would like particular information, we're happy to provide it. Just when we get into 500 feet, there's a lot of information. It's difficult or impossible to provide to any great detail. And I believe that's really the project in a nutshell. It's relatively straightforward. Happy to answer any questions.
We have any commissioner comment?
What's the square footage for these houses?
I'm sorry, it it will vary the footprints on the house. If you give me one second, I'll tell you what it was. The footprints are about 1800 square feet.
So the two stores will be 3600 square feet?
It depends what you consider. Actually, I'm sorry, 1600 square feet. They are going to be 3200 square feet. Out of that 3200 square feet, you're going to eliminate the garage area because I don't believe, you know, how you, depends how you calculate the square footage, right? So if you took out 400 square feet, you're probably in that 2800 square foot range for the first and second floor.
All two car garages?
Yes, all two car garages.
Those garages to the front, the side, the rear?
Predominantly, they're all to the side. So lot nine is a front loaded garage. The lots four through eight are side loaded. Lot three is front loaded. Two is front loaded and one is side loaded.
What about on street parking there?
You, we've built the road to township standard, so there would be parallel parking. You could park on along the road.
On the side opposite the or one side or both sides?
We have not restricted any parking in this. That would really, you know, we're proposing dedication of the roads. That would be up to the township on providing it, but I don't see anything that would preclude parking along the road.
Parking along the road on both sides is what you're saying that would preclude it.
I don't see, you know, on many of the other roads, I don't see that you precluded. So I don't see that you have no parking on on this property, on this road.
Many roads in Radnor where we do preclude it for the simple reason that emergency vehicles can't pass. So that's why I noted that.
We would say whatever the township says in that regard is okay. As Rob indicated, it is built to township spec, the width, as well as the cul-de-sac bulb. So whatever the township would suggest for the regulation of on-street parking, you know, I think we could go with.
Commissioner Enderly, you may, I don't know if you were on the board when our drawing came through, but just for the item you noted for emergency vehicles, because the road was narrow, the board did require that there was no parking on sections of that street. As Mr. Brosman said, that's something that we could do here. He could say no parking on that northern side, if you will.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Enderly, you finished?
No, I had a couple more, so.
No, 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 you're not commissioner. Sorry, Rich.
I over, I over, I overspoke Rich, though.
Okay, sorry.
I jumped in.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right, so what about the the small area of property that goes out to Strafford Avenue? That's that's going to remain undeveloped or what's the plan for that?
That will become part of lot five and there is no development proposed in that area.
Presumably, lot five could could build a driveway out to Strafford Ave.
I don't think they would have any desire to do that. And none is shown on this plan.
Can you show me what lot five is?
Lot five is this lot right here. So it'll have a piece of property that goes out to Strafford Avenue.
Oh, I understand. And what is on, sorry, I'm jumping my turn, Rich.
Well, go ahead. You know, my question is, what is that? What's going to happen to that? And if it's part of that lot, that's a much bigger lot than the rest of them. Go ahead, more.
Thanks. I appreciate your comment. And I guess I'm wondering from this map, it's, you know, small on my screen. It's a little hard to tell. What's on the either side of that strip of the lot? Behind, behind lot five, are those existing homes?
Yes.
private lots?
There's an existing home to the east of it on Strafford Avenue. That was a house probably constructed on eight or nine years ago. And on the west side, there is a existing house there now.
Thank you.
Somebody might want a path there or something. I don't know.
Can I jump in?
Go ahead.
Can you put the map back up? Maybe I'm in the wrong view. Is the map up still?
It's up.
Okay, so just a, just a question. Is this, is this going to have, this is going to be a development? Am I correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So this development is going to have a name, the, you know, XYZ Estates, there's going to be homeowners association, correct?
I don't believe we were proposing a homeowners association with the current configuration. We're offering the road for dedication.
Okay, so that's my my next question. What, what advantage does the township get if you dedicate a road to the township? I mean, we're going to be responsible for the maintenance and everything else. And, you know, it's going to have to get torn up and we're going to have to deal with the inconvenience and signage and all that other good stuff. If you have to change the pipes or something along this line. So what advantage does the township? Why would we want to take over that road?
Well, just like many township.
First, first of all, you don't have to accept the offer of dedication. It's up to the township.
Well, it's up to the board of commissioners, correct?
Correct, and I'll let Mr. Rice jump in if I'm wrong, but I do believe some townships find it to be beneficial to own the roads. I think there's certain tax monies that and reimbursements that the township gets from the state. But it's really your decision if you want the road. You know, we can go either way. We were proposing it. It is built to township spec.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. White because I saw Bill nodding his head as well as you, Mr. Lambert. I mean, what's the advantage? You know, what's the cost advantage? You know, I mean, I think it's great that our police get to maybe patrol it a little more easier, but we're going to be responsible for plowing it and all that other good stuff. So help me understand why this is something that we want as opposed to something that this could just be liability.
Well, I'll, I'll address, well, I can't address why or why you would want it or not. But some of the with regard to taxes and fees. First of all, with the road meeting the PennDOT specs, which is, I understand, are the same as what the township would require. That would make the road eligible for state liquid fuels reimbursement. So we would get more liquid fuels money as a result of this road being added to our inventory. And then this road would fall into the same road replacement program. It'd get added to the list and would be repaved in the future with state liquid fuels money. With regard to taxes in I'm, I'm assuming they're connecting to sewer. I think they have to. So the the houses would all be connected to township sewer. They'd be paying the sewer fee. And that money would be going to replace those lines down the road. That really has nothing to do with the road being dedicated. That's its own separate system. But the taxes would cover the police patrol and the police protection. The taxes would cover all the other fees that they cover for all the other houses, including the garbage collection, the snow removal, if it ever snows again. And those kind of services.
Okay, can I just jump in? So a road that size, how much do we expect getting from liquid fuels?
Yeah, I that that I don't know off the top of my head. I
Okay, because it just seems like a small road, if it would pay for itself. And my guess is that it probably, when you look at repaving, you look at snow removal. You know, I don't know how the, how the trash will work. It just I don't know. I think maybe, maybe, maybe we should be limiting this stuff. I don't know. That's just why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah, I mean, regardless of, you know, I mean, we can't predict what the actual cost of resurfacing will be when it needs to be resurfaced in, say, 15, 20 years, however long it lasts. That all is determined by the bids, but presumably the way the formula works is that we would, it would be enough to cover the replacement of that road. And that's how we fund our road resurfacing throughout the town. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not a dollar for dollar match. It's a, we get 900 to 100,000 to a million a year based on bidding that out. That allows us to do X number of roads. This would just be added to that formula.
I thought liquid fuels tax was derived from actually from the gas that we sell. It's not. It's derived from our footprint of asphalt for public roads. I guess it's not state owned roads, but maybe is it state owned roads as well as township owned rolls or just?
Well, the money that we get as a township are just based on our township dedicated roads.
Okay, it's not based on gas.
Yeah, the money that's generated, I do believe, is from the state gas tax. So it's all, the state collects it throughout the Commonwealth, puts it in the formula based on the inventory and then allocates it to each municipality from there.
Based on our, so it's not based on the gas we sell. It's based on how much roads we have.
Yeah, it's not based on the gas just sold in Radnor. It's, it's
Okay, based on everywhere. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about the development itself? Because I think the road piece will have to
Because I think the road piece will have to come to us, and we'll probably have this discussion all over again eventually at some point. Um, so my question on this is why so many homes? I, I mean, you know, I'm looking at this map, and it really is very, um, apparent that we're shoehorning in a whole bunch of homes. I understand that's a buy right plan, um, but it just seems excessive in an extremely small strip of land between some already, you know, pretty densely populated, uh, you know, built-out areas. Um, you know, is there a possibility that there could be less homes on this plan?
I don't think it's an over-dense plan. It meets all of the requirements. There's also room to build the road to fully to township specs and the whiffs. And, you know, zoning is there for a reason. It complies. I don't want to get into measurements, but if you look right above this, it's not out of character with the, uh, with the area. That's not controlling. The zoning of each tract is controlling. But these seem like reasonably sized homes on reasonably sized lots that meet the requirements for the way the township has owned them. So, you know, we don't feel that it's too dense.
I, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Brosman. I, I guess I kind of feel like I disagree a little bit. And certainly to look at the more established neighborhoods, I, I understand what you're saying. It does look very similar. But in that area, we seem to know so much more now than we did probably when a lot of those homes were built around the stormwater, uh, the issues that exist over there. And I understand you're going to be controlling the stormwater on these sites. But there's still, you know, it, it's definitely going to, I think, be contributing to another problem that exists over there. So, um, you know, again, I, I, I would like to see there to be less. I just, it, it seems like it's an over, an overuse of, of that property. And you really are, um, putting in a, a lot of homes in a very small space. That's my only comment.
So I have a couple of questions for you guys. Um, the first is, I'm looking at section, well, I'm looking at Lot Five, which looks really weird. And I guess I have two different thoughts. The one deals with our code. I'm looking at section 255 dash 34 spot, uh, C, which prohibits through lots. It looks to me like Lot Five is probably a through lot, and I'm not sure why it didn't get flagged. Maybe it has something to do with vehicular access, which is an exception, but it looks a lot like a through lot to me. Maybe the more important thing to bring up, though, is I think realistically, the owner of Lot Five is never really going to know that they own that little spear that goes to Stratford Avenue. They're not going to put a fence around that little spear that goes to Stratford Avenue, which means that they're never going to go back there because they don't want to wander off of their property onto the bed and breakfast. Do you guys have any kind of appetite for dedicating that as a very minimal amount of open space to the township?
I think that's the first time we've heard that. We'd have to, uh, take that under advisement. Now, I'm not sure it's a through lot. I'll have to look up the definitions. I, um, that area isn't really buildable or anything.
Exactly.
But we'd have to, um, you know, think about that.
I mean, that's really my overarching point, because frankly, if I'm playing zoning officer on TV, you're already scraping the bottom of the barrel. It's not so much an issue of zoning. It may be an issue of zoning. I want to bring that to your attention. But it's largely just an issue of that's going to be wasted land for that property owner. Or worse, the property owner is going to try and do something with it, like a driveway to Stratford Avenue, which I would be unhappy with. If we could lock that up, I think that that would be nice. I'd also like to ask Roger and Steve, turning to page 118 in the packet, page two of the Gannett Fleming memo. Under this heading subdivision and land developments, um, item three. I see that there is a 80-foot right-of-way requirement and a carway width of 48 feet. The applicant has indicated on the plans that they are providing an additional 10 feet of right-of-way on their frontage, which would be the equivalent of a 60-foot right-of-way. But you said that the Board of Commissioners may require the reservation or dedication of rights of way to conform with the required standards. I understand you to be saying that this board can ask for an additional 20 feet of right-of-way. Two questions. First, am I reading that correctly? And second off, would that interfere with the plan?
Uh, answer is your first question is yes. It's at the, uh, the, the will of the board to ask for the additional right-of-way as the way that the code reads in that section. And secondly, if, if, uh, Rob, if you'll pull the plan back up again. So the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, but this, the right-of-way line you have shown along the trees there is the, is, includes the additional 10 feet. If you go just south of the view that we're looking at now, the, 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 the home that's on the corner of Stratford has a garage that would be located. You can see the existing garage and the existing home. If you would take that full width of 40 feet on, from the center of the roadway, it would really be unusable land for the township for additional right-of-way because it would conflict with that. And I believe north of the site, there's also a structure closer to the road there also.
Would that affect the buildability of the lot, though? And like I said, if I'm playing zoning officer, you are scraping the bottom of the barrel. I don't know the answer. I'm not fishing.
Jack, if I can jump in one second?
Please.
We're, we're providing the full 40-foot half-width. So the 80 feet is usually 40-foot on center.
Got it.
We're providing the 40-foot half-width. So we, we, we were proposing the whole thing here.
Did that change recently, Rob? Because we had talked about 30 feet.
That was in the resubmission, um, that we made a while ago. I just think that it was confused in your most recent letter.
Okay, then I stand corrected. They are providing the, the full 40 feet.
I answered that question.
I think it makes sense. I agree with Roger that providing less would make sense. But again, we don't want to raise issue with it. We can accommodate it. Um, but I don't think 40 feet really makes sense that you're ever really going to do it.
Right. I have one more question. Um, item five under subdivision land development on page two of the memo and page 118 of the packet. You write, Roger, access and circulation for firefighting and other emergency equipment, moving vans, fuel trucks, garbage collection, deliveries, and snow removal shall be planned for efficient operation and convenience. It wasn't clear to me if you were saying that there's a problem and that this is not being planned for, or what? Why was that in there?
Uh, we typically put that comment in there to, uh, have the applicant provide turning movements, uh, in, in their section, just to show. And, uh, I know Mr. Lambert has done this in the past. They actually customize the size of the trucks to Radnor's, uh, trash trucks and fire vehicles.
Okay, so we're looking to see turning movements on the revised plan, the final plan. It's not however your position that this on its face would not qualify for that section.
Correct. There, I, there's no, uh, reason to think it's deficient, as they mentioned, they're building the road to the township spec.
It looked big to me. I was kind of surprised when I thought that you were saying that it wouldn't work, but now I understand. Thank you very much. Those are all my questions. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Hearing none, guys. Thank you very much for the time. We will see you for, I guess, your preliminary vote.
Jack? One question, this is John Rice.
Please.
It, going back to Roger's memo and something that Rob Lambert said, Rob, uh, you indicated that there are infiltration beds on each of the lots. There's an infiltration bed on the front of the lot and one on the rear of the lot. Just, um, since if that's the way this plan goes forward, uh, I'm going to have to write some kind of a stormwater management agreement to deal with that. Are you talking about individual stormwater management systems on each of the lots, separate and apart from each other? Or some, some larger consolidated system that runs across the lot lines?
Nope, they're all individual lots. You can see on this plan, and I'll zoom in. Um, so each of these systems, you can see it's a little bit darker green in, in the illustrative plan. Each one of the, is a separate water system, and so they do not cross the property lines.
So, so let me just ask you, um, since practically speaking, um, you're going to have those systems in the front yard and another system in the rear yard. How are those folks going to be able to use those lots? Are they going to be able to build on top of those stormwater systems?
We've put them in locations that are typically open lawn areas. Um, you know, so they're going to be underneath the ground, right? You're not going to, you're, you're going to have lawn on it. You're going to have driveway on it. Um, it'll be completely usable areas of the lot.
Well, but my question is, if I want to put a pool or a garage or something on top of one of these stormwater systems, am I going to be able to do it?
Depending on where you are, you'd have to modify, either build not on top of the system or modify, change the locations of the systems. So that would be incumbent on the future owner.
So each of the, each of these lots is going to come in with a separate building permit that shows on-lot stormwater systems that will have to comply with this plan if it gets approved. And then if, if anyone wants to, if lot number seven wants to put a pool in the backyard, because it looks like you have a deck at least drawn there, and it doesn't look like there's a lot of room between the deck and where the, uh, stormwater system is located. Doesn't look like enough area. These lot, how big are these lots? 7,000 square feet?
Uh, 10,000, 11,000, 9,000, you know.
Okay, but I guess my question is, and again, it becomes a maintenance issue. We're talking about then, we're going to have to have, uh, individual stormwater management agreements for each of these lots if this goes forward. Um, there's no centralized stormwater system for this project. And the homeowners will not be able to build on top of these. Can you put driveways on top of these?
Yes.
Parking areas are fine. Um, okay, walkways are okay, I assume.
Walkways, patios, you know.
How about if I want to put a large vegetable garden on top of one of these? Can I do that?
That would be fine.
Okay, but any kind of substantial construction, footers, anything like that, pools, you're not going to be able to do that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Rob. I don't have any other questions.
Excellent, guys. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Moving to item 3H, resolution 2021 dash 36, authorizing the payment of change order number two, remediation of unsuitable soil at the Cornerstone HOA segment of the Radnor Tap Trail to RoadCon Inc. in amount to be negotiated. I will so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, Steve, could you tell us about this?
Yes, Commissioner. So, uh, in the portion of the Radnor Tap Trail that we noted, uh, which is right behind Cornerstone, we did encounter unsuitable soil. Sorry about that. We did encounter unsuitable soil, and, uh, we had specific measurements. We came up with a remediation, uh, process. And the actual amount is in the amount of plus or minus $45,000, uh, depending on actual field conditions. So the work entails, you know, digging out the unsuitable soil, putting in a geotextile fabric to spread some of the weight, uh, installing number four clean stone. So this, this is clearly outside the scope of the contract. So we're requesting the Board of Commissioners, uh, approve this so we can actually continue with that portion of the Radnor Tap Trail. That is actually on hold, uh, until, uh, if it so pleases the board to approve this.
I'm sorry, Steve, can you, can you re-explain exactly where behind Cornerstone is?
Sure, Commissioner. So, um, this portion of the Radnor Tap Trail, if you were to go down South Eithan Avenue until it dead-ends on Brimmore Avenue, and then took, take a right directly after you pass under the 476 overpass on your left is what has been a stone road for some time. So really, it was just an access road back to a meter pit for R H M, and it meters our sanitary sewer flows in Harrowford Township. So what this is, what this part of the tap trail is, and we obtained an easement from the Cornerstone HOA to do this, is to pave this trail, bring it up to proper specs, pave this trail over the recently redone bridge that was washed away a couple of years ago in the storm, and it terminates at Harrowford Township with the thought that, you know, it provides connectivity someday to possible future trails in Harrowford, or you can walk for a few hundred yards back beyond there. So this is actually adjacent to State Route 476, the blue route, um, adjacent to and part of the Cornerstone HOA open space.
Thank you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
I have a bunch. Um, so I, I think that we should put a not to exceed, not make it, uh, limited to 45,000. You can change that amount to 50,000 if we so choose to vote on it. My biggest, um, concern or question, I mean, the reason why we have such stormwater issues and the township is, um, at times struggling for cash is we're going to spend $45,000 to get this right and do the right thing. And most of the residents get to put a, a rain garden in or something along those lines um, that I don't necessarily think are any long-term fixes, um, because these things die or they need upkeep, unlike the township where we'll do that. So I guess, um, and I have a bunch of questions for you, Steve, but that is, that is my biggest concern that we're going to put 40, we're going to spend $45,000 of the taxpayers' money to show that we're doing the right thing, yet everybody seems to get a pass on it, and that's why we have these flooding issues. So I don't know if Steve or Bill or someone wants to speak to it. Um, are my assertions correct?
So Commissioner, I, I don't know. So this has nothing to do with stormwater management. This is solely about soils that cannot support the loads, uh, that are going to be required of the trail. So what we do, this may sound old school, but it's very effective. Uh, the area of the trail gets cut down to subgrade, and we run a loaded triaxle dump truck, which comes in at about 73,280 pounds. And we run that dump truck over it, and we look and see where the soil fails, if it fails. In this case, there were failures. And from there, come up with a mitigation plan, and we very specifically measure all these areas, the depth, the width, the length, to come up with the price that you see before you.
So what are, okay.
It's not a stormwater item. It's a.
Okay, it's not. So what are these, what are these soils failing at then?
Pardon me?
What are these soils failing at?
So there may be organics. There could be topsoil down there. There could be, uh, a sandy clay, which cannot hold up to it, silt.
Okay.
I think it's a.
I'll second Sean's motion to make it not to exceed 45,000.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, that's fine. Jack called.
I guess I've heard a motion in a second. Is there a, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Well, opposed, nay?
Can we ask a question? We can't even ask a question.
Not for amendments.
Fine, then, Rich, can we table this until we, uh, toward the end of the conversation? Table it.
Yeah.
Jack called a vote.
Well.
I haven't gotten votes from everybody yet. Where are we?
So.
I'm happy to table it.
Okay, so we're going to table it until the end.
Okay.
So Steve, isn't the 45,000 already in there as the maximum amount that you think this is going to cost?
So I I did, there is a caveat depending on actual field conditions. So we run this loaded truck, we mark out areas. And conceivably, as we're, as that contractor is excavating, we could find. Additional amounts. Of unsuitable soil. But. I would be comfortable with the board saying not to exceed forty five thousand dollars. If it came out that it would exceed that for some unknown reason, we would come back to the board. But. If you read the memo and uh. Pardon my mistake on this. So. In the resolution, it notes forty five thousand dollars, and in the legislative memo, it notes forty five thousand dollars. We didn't get this price until right when this stuff was due. So uh, my fault that I did not change the title. On the agenda item, but forty five thousand dollars what's in there.
Okay, and and this isn't related to the 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 um, the base and work that we were going to do as part of the agreement with the HOA, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So picture, there is an eight foot multi-use trail. And some of the soil under that trail isn't going to be able to withstand the trucks coming in and out to pave the trail.
So it's more a a matter of making sure that we can get the equipment in there to do the work that needs to be done, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and if we don't do this, then the tra- the trail would just terminate and we would lose the opportunity to go across. Um, and extend the trail as was originally in the plans.
Uh, if we don't do this, you can't build that last section of trail. I'm assuming we may have to go back to some of the grant funding agencies because everything was precluded on. The trail, its connectivity. So thi- this could have far reaching effects.
And the funding for this is going to come from the bonds that we already um, had issues as well as state grant funding?
We got a two point two five million in grants that we received for this. And uh, like I said, there was various criteria. But if we were to not build this. Uh, paved mo- shared use trail at this point. Uh, I would think that we'd have to go back to those bonding agency or those grant agencies. Uh, I don't know if it would affect the grant or not.
But this money is not coming from the the general fund right now. It's coming from the project dollars for this project.
Correct. So when when I presented this to the board. As part of a total, we had a contingency amount. And this is part of that contingency amount.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Steve, do you recall what the contingency amount was in the original proposal?
I apologize, Commissioner. I do not. It's usually. We usually go fifteen percent. We may have gone ten percent on the tap trail. So it's a six figure number. But I I pa- I can get that information, but I did not have the funding issue of the funding spreadsheet with this.
No problem. It's but it's well within, it's well above forty five thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any additional Commissioner comment?
Let's um, let's uh, put that uh, amendment or make it not to exceed forty five thousand.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay?
Nay.
Amendment passes. Is there any additional com- Commissioner comment on the amended resolution? Very none. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item. Three I Arbor Day proclamation. I will read the proclamation. I will move for its. I guess proclamation. We got a second, we'll vote. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water. Lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife and. Whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products and. Whereas trees in our township increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. Therefore, I William White, Radner Township Manager, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, twenty twenty one as Arbor Day. The township of Radner and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Do commend this observance to all of our citizens. Furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well being of this and future generations. Ah, I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Uh, Commissioner, just a, just a couple of things with regards to Arbor Day. First of all, thank you for uh, reading through the proclamation. It satisfies the Tree City USA application, of course, for the twenty twenty. Uh, award that we'll be receiving. Which at this point, we we are planning for a little ceremony on Friday, April thirtieth. That'll take place at Friends of Radner Trails Park at approximately ten o'clock AM. Uh, we'll be partnering with the Radner Conservancy as we've done in the past number of years. They'll be contributing six trees. Uh, this year we'll have three pomegranate trees and three hackberries that'll be planted, and it's going to be a small ceremony uh, with the Parks Department, the Recreation Department and the Conservancy. So we just want to extend the invitation to any commissioners that may be available. We'll certainly be. Uh, reaching out to the Parks and Recreation Board and especially the Shade Tree Commission to attend as well. So. We'll send you some more information as well, so you have that.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed nay? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving to item three J resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty five, further extending relaxed outdoor dining and retail through November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Steve, is that you?
Well, I think I'll take a, yeah, I'll just take a stab at it.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, this is um. If if the board will recall back about a year ago. Uh, we first adopted um. Resolution twenty twenty sixty one. Which suspended some of the or relaxed some of the outdoor dining and retail restrictions that we have in our various codes. Uh, in an effort to help uh, those businesses uh, through the uh, this whole COVID uh, situation. Uh, the board extended that uh, through. Uh, the end of March of this year. So March thirty first, twenty twenty one, the the relaxed. Uh, enforcement is set to expire. You know, given that. Uh, while things are seem to be trending in the right direction in terms of restrictions, their restaurants and indoor establishments are still. Uh, capacity limited. Um, which was the the underlying reason, as I understood it, to to relax those restrictions in the first place. Uh, to give the restaurants a a little bit more space to make up for the lost indoor. Uh, sales opportunities. Uh, so what we're uh, what what's in front of the board tonight is an opportunity to extend that again. November thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty one was the date selected. Um, it's a, it's based on or tied to the next item on the agenda, the request from the WBA. For use of the the parking lot for the tent. Um, keeping in mind that. Where private businesses have been able to take advantage of these relaxed restrictions, uh, if they've got space to put an outdoor tent up for additional outdoor dining. You know, they've been able to take advantage of that, whereas a lot of the restaurants and businesses in Wayne. Um, do not have the luxury of a lot of space to to expand out, which is why the tent. Made some sense last year. Uh, and why it's back on the agenda again tonight, I guess. Um, but what's in front of you now is extending. Uh, those relaxed restrictions then, uh, as written until November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Again, there's. That they. It it it's, I guess it's as unknown as March thirty first, twenty twenty one was back when the board extended this last summer. Will we, will the the pandemic restrictions be lifted by then? We don't know. Will they be lifted before then? We don't know. But uh, that was the date that that we selected for this, at least for tonight's discussion. And I I guess I should also say, and and I'm. I'm going off of anecdotal information here, not anything that's that's driven by hard data, but. My understanding of those businesses that have been able to take advantage of the relaxed restrictions. You know, have have at least. Done better than they otherwise would have. Uh, especially during those hard, those hard months where it was completely shut down. Or limited to twenty five percent capacity. So. You know, the board in in doing this has helped those businesses out, um, and this would continue to allow them to. To plug that gap, uh, whether they're at fifty or seventy five percent capacity even today.
Great. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Comment?
Bill, just a couple of quick questions. Um, this is going to apply to Garrett Hill as well, correct?
Township wide.
Okay, great. Now, for some reason, um. You know, we hit that herd immunity, knock on wood. Um. This will stay good until the end of uh, October. Am I correct? I don't. Uh, we won't rescind this early because we've hit, say, um. Hurt immunity, am I correct?
Well, it it as written, it goes through November thirtieth, twenty twenty one or such earlier date as the board may specify by subsequent resolution.
Okay, so.
The board still has the authority to change that.
Sure. So my 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 big concern, I I would actually like it if it was written in there that um. Um, that it sounded like in Garrett Hill, because uh. We don't have outdoor dining in Garrett Hill. If. The businesses make the investment and they. Uh, rent out tables or tents, and then all of a sudden this board says, oh, we've hit herd immunity, everything goes back to normal. Um, that would adversely affect. Those businesses. Uh, is there any way to get in there? Um, that um, Garrett Hill would, uh, those businesses that are in the overlay that are restricted from outdoor dining. Would still be allowed to have outdoor dining until the end of uh. The um. It to to the end of November. Um, I don't know if um, someone could write that in on the fly, John Rice. But I don't want to see the businesses in my ward making investment and then told. Sorry, uh, we're going back to normal. You lose that.
I'm not, Sean, I'm not sure that would make sense to write it into this resolution. Prospectively. You know, if this changes, it's going to come back to the board. And I think that's. You know, where you raise this issue. But to pick out. You know, one group of businesses. And write it into this. Everybody's being extended now to November twenty first. So. The board decides for whatever reason, herd immunity or otherwise to to change that, it's going to come back and you're going to have. The chance at that point to to make that argument.
Sure, but the next resolution is about a tent. In downtown Wayne that doesn't really help the Garrett Hill businesses. So.
Let's focus on the resolution in front of.
No, I I am focusing on the resolution, thank you, because it doesn't seem equitable. Um, for the red, for the uh, for the businesses in Garrett Hill, because these are. Uh, tied together, this resolution and the next resolution.
But there's no room in Garrett Hill for a tent. Of that size.
No, there is no, there is no resolution, but it's it's easy. The businesses in Wayne get something, the businesses in Garrett Hill don't. So the businesses. Uh, can go back, uh, in in Wayne can go back to where they were, but meanwhile. The township is paying for this tent, and it's the business owners in Garrett Hill that are paying for their tents.
I don't think the township is paying for the tent.
Bill? We're not paying for the tent, we're not paying for extra police, we're not paying for the tables, we're not paying for porta potties, am I correct?
Yeah, not, no, I don't know what.
We did that last year.
Last year we did. On what's being proposed tonight? No, uh, just just real quickly, though. Um, for any business outside the Wayne area, the Wayne Business District area, that they've theoretically been taking advantage of. Of this relaxed enforcement going back to last summer. So those restaurants, and I'm not speaking for the restaurants in Garrett Hill. Um, specifically, but any restaurant, uh. You know, these relaxed restrictions have been in place now. Uh, for the last eight or so months. So the outdoor dining in Garrett Hill. Um, you know, we, you know, the the one restaurant, um, Flippin Bailey's has has had an outdoor dining component. They had a tent there. So. They've been able to take advantage. Alls we're doing here with this resolution is extending that. Uh, further so they could continue to take advantage of it.
So who's going to be paying for this tent in the fa- in the final resolution?
Can we just, can we do this resolution first before we start on the other one? Why don't we vote?
No, because, no, because because I I believe that they're in tandem. I just have a couple of questions. Please let me ask them. Thanks.
Yeah, so um.
You certainly have been monopolizing the entire evening tonight, so.
I have questions.
Somebody else ask a question.
Well, uh, I have questions, and that's what these meetings are for. If you have a question, you can ask them.
Guys, please calm down, both of you.
I'm I'm calm. I I'm calm. I just asked, I I asked the manager a question.
Sean? Please just calm down.
So specific to the resolution that's in front of you now for consideration, there is no township expense whatsoever. Uh, it it extends to any business throughout the township. But it, those that have the private property to expand beyond their walls, they've been able to take the most advantage of it. Uh, so we are simply recommending that this be extended, uh, so they can continue to do that. But on the next agenda item, no, the township is not paying for any of that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments on this resolution? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote on item three J resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty five. All in favor say aye? Aye? All opposed nay? Motion passes unanimously. Moving to resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty seven, approving a lease agreement with the Wayne Business Association for the lease of a portion of the North Wayne parking lot to be used for tented outdoor dining. And special events through November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Bill, if you could tell us a little bit about this, and then we'll open it up to Commissioner comment.
Sure, um, the WBA and we've, uh, Deanna and Ken uh, are here tonight representing the WBA, and we'll happy to be happy to. Talk a little bit about um, what they're asking of the commissioners and the township here tonight. Um, just very quickly to tee it up. What's being proposed is a a similar setup to what the was at the. The township parking lot last year. From late spring all the way through the end of the calendar year. And it has was just discussed with the prior resolution, last year the township did fund the tent. And the ancillary costs associated with it. Um, what's being proposed tonight, the WBA is coming. With a, an agreement that has been uh, discussed uh, between administratively and the WBA. Uh, that uh, assign the responsibilities accordingly, and in this case, the WBA is is going to be managing, paying for. Um, and taking care of the tent uh, with some very specific um. Uh, obligations that go with that. And the the license agreement was included in the board packet. Um, so. Deanna, Ken, uh, if if Jack, if you're okay with it, um. I'll let let you guys uh, provide your input.
Okay, I'll let Ken go ahead. I will just uh, make the statement for the WBA that the whole board approved this. Um, and we got very positive feedback with limited comment uh, in the negative about bringing the tent back and um, the community as a whole, not just business people, were very positive. About the experience and bringing it back and how beneficial it was for the community. And I will turn it over to Ken because he has a lot more details, uh, specific details about it.
Yeah, thanks. And uh. You know, obviously, this was driven by a ton of community outreach that was um. you know, everybody was behind bringing this thing back. They realized what what the benefit of having kind of a town center and an attraction to the center of town did, not only for the restaurants and the business and keeping us alive through a very difficult period, but also for the community and having a place where they can actually feel safe and gather. And we got literally handwritten cards and letters, and we went a couple of extra steps to actually make sure we, everybody was on board with this. The WBA board unanimously voted to support this and figure out how to fund this, so that there was no burden on the township. And then went the further step of actually surveying all the businesses on North Wayne Avenue, West Avenue, Route thirty, that were basically accessible to the public parking areas, of which we were going to obviously impact with this tent and by bringing it back. We did forty, forty-eight emails and fifty-three hand-delivered letters. Got, I think, one negative comment from one vendor on North Wayne Avenue, which was a a eyeglasses store, which, you know, again, has probably a handful of people at a time in their store. But everybody else, as we were doing the rounds for, making these, making these rounds and surveying people, were incredibly positive and realized the benefit it brought to bringing people to Wayne. Our job as a business association is to drive business to Wayne. This thing clearly was a huge driver of that during a very difficult period. So all the different reasons for us wanting to bring this back were justified and verified by our outreach efforts. And and then, as a business owner, obviously, the impact we had, you know, we would have been, we would have been dead in the water for four months had we not had that outlet there. So, you know, the North Wayne Avenue is a little different than Garrett Hill, Sean, I I understand. And we don't have private property to put tents on. And I actually, I actually filed a permit with the township to take some parking spaces, which I didn't want to do once, once the tent went away, which, again, required another level of investment impacting parking and mixing parking with people. The tent, the tent piece is the best workaround we could find for not having to close off North Wayne Avenue. You know, you can't close off the North Wayne Avenue and have a dry cleaner or a excuse me, ophthalmologist officer impact that parking. So the tent square kind of idea really became, I think, the best workaround and the least impact on anybody in the township and providing the most benefit. So we came up with a solution to figure out how to fund this ourselves through sponsorship dollars. We've had a ton of local business people that also realize the benefit of having a name on something is positive, that are willing to spend the money to fund this, so there's no impact on the township. And, you know, bring it back and allow people a public space. Every, every town that you're seeing designed that has some type of master plan, has a central public space. This has become that by default. And you know, the positivity that came out of this thing was really inspiring. And you know, people really want to have this back, and we figured out a way to do it, so that the township does not have to foot the bill.
Ken, at the end of last year, we had a lot of issues in terms of overpopulation of the tent, crowding and some behavioral issues. How, if at all, does this lease address that?
So the the WBA in our license agreement will be responsible for obviously adhering to any protocols and measures and capacity limits that are, that are put in place. And we, at the end of last year, if you recall, we actually hired security to do that, so that we weren't, you know, putting this on the police to go monitor this thing, because it did get somewhat out of control. So we have, as the WBA have, you know, amongst ourselves and the restaurants that are being served by this, have volunteered to monitor, have actual security as if it's our own space. And obviously, we're subject to a license agreement that makes sure that we have to adhere to those measures. You guys have a, I think, a forty-eight hour termination right in the, in the license agreement that, you know, if we're not doing what we say we're going to do in terms of security, cleaning, safety, capacity, all those issues that, you know, the thing can be taken down the next day. But we're doing that on our dime. That as as well as a janitorial. So we will, we'll take that on, our staff will take that on to manage that. Obviously, we benefit from it, so we're going to be hypersensitive to make sure it's done right.
If I could also add that we do have money, we don't need to make the money right away. I mean, we have enough to cover two and a half months of the tent at this point. And we've had numerous spot, you know, larger companies reaching out to us to ask us, what can they do this season, summer, when, fall, winter, or Christmas? They want to sponsor things. So we are already building towards that, but we do have the money to start this right away. So we, it's not like something we have to build the money for. We have it right away and are able to do it.
The other thing we went into, by the way, is kind of, not all surprisingly, is that the tent companies like Winnie's a no kind of tomorrow, because obviously tents are a hot commodity. So we're, we're hoping we can get through this, obviously. And I have everything on hold, the same vendor and all that. But you know, we have the money put away, as Deanna said, and we've already had sponsors that are big-name companies that realize the benefit of sponsoring to the demographic in Wayne, that you know, they're willing to help, and they realize the benefit to the community, and all the messages that sends for them to be a part of it. So it's a really, a really positive thing, I think, all around.
Deanna, in the resolution, it says outdoor dining and special events. What what's the, you know, what could fall under special events?
It could really be anything from the community, like, you know, obviously, we'll have, it'll just be open every day for anyone to use. And then the bulk of the time will be used for outdoor dining and then musical events that Ken might put there. But also, if a community organization wanted to have something, if Wayne Press wanted to hold something, it is open to that as well. We'll be hosting networking events there, because it's an open space, open side. So it allows people to start to do some in-person events. So and then we would use it as something in the fall, we're going to plan the Fall Festival, so it'll be part of that. So there'll be different special events, and certainly things will come up as restrictions are lifted and we're able to offer the space to people. And even if a private community member wanted to do a small thing there, we would allow, you know, that's part of having it there. It's a community space.
Yeah, we had, we had events there that were, the church had several events there. The church had their Santa kids thing there. They had several post-funeral gatherings there. They had, you know, we've offered it to them to do kind of any, whatever they want, if they want to do services out there. We had kids there taking online classes, because we give them free Wi-Fi in the tent when kids were not able to go to school, which was really actually amazing and cool. And kids had got to see each other in a, in a very safe setting outside that the schools couldn't offer them at that point. We had yoga classes in the tent. We had Pilates classes in the tent. We had birthday parties in the tent. We had like, so to Deanna's point is, we want to encourage more Wayne businesses to use the tent to their advantage for promotional things. And, you know, we got, we got real creative in the, in the middle of summer, where we were actually, several of the restaurants kind of got together and were handing out other businesses' promotional materials in our to-go bags, because all we had was to-go dining. We, it, we did a, an actual group effort where we were, we were all feeding the Bryn Mawr Hospital workers on Christmas Eve and and New Year's Eve. And, I mean, it was amazing to see what that thing did to get us all to work together, not just the restaurants. It was, it was, you know, the salon, we were putting their stuff in there. We had real estate companies getting, giving their cards out in our to-go bags, because everyone was just, you know, everything was working out the front door. It was really cool to see that, what that did to bring that street and that community together. And you know, we want to, now, we kind of know what we're doing, and we can actually structure a program around it and kind of manage it through the WBA to encourage people to use the tent for whatever they want in, under our, you know, license agreement here, and really make it a community space. That's the whole point of the community square.
So two questions on Deanna and Ken. Thank you for bringing this forward. Number one, you you have, you, it sounds like you have been in contact with Wayne Presbyterian and discussing this with them and they're on board, it sounds like.
Well, they, they, yes, they're, they're in support of, you know, obviously, having a space they can utilize for their own functions, because they're somewhat shut down right now.
Sure.
In that regard. But I have a meeting with, and I've had several meetings with them on, on this as we went along. You know, obviously, there, there's an issue that they have in their mind about the revenue share with the parking that's affiliated back there. An important point is that this lot is not part of that revenue share. And we're actually pushing more people into their lot for their benefit from a revenue share standpoint. So you know, that that board is, I would say, majority of them are fine with it, because they're not operational right now at full capacity. But they also, we're not limiting their access. You can access it through the, you know, between the senior center and the back of Alessandro's. They've actually moved their entrance up to the far end, so they were doing that anyway. So it's minimal impact, I think, in terms of what we're doing. But yes, they've, they're excited. The first email we got from them was, oh, my God, we're excited about the idea of having events in there again. So I'm I'm meeting with them again on Wednesday, but.
And the conversations are happening. That's my main concern, is that the conversations are happening.
Yes, of course. And they're, they're obviously a stakeholder there.
All right. And the second question, you may have tipped your hat, too. And and I apologize if you're not ready to discuss it, but it sounds like, given that the tent is going up, the plans for the Wayne Music Festival are are off.
So we're looking at an October date for that.
Okay.
And we haven't decided yet. We're looking at, we're like, basically, we had the whole, we had the entire lineup scheduled last year, which we, we're trying to, for the ease of coordinating, just plug that lineup for the.
Salvage that.
Yeah, so it's probably sometime in October, but this would be, we would, if the tent was there, we would obviously utilize the tent.
And just incorporate it into your stage plan.
Yeah, instead of obviously putting it, that's usually where the main stage goes. The main stage would probably go down at the corner of thirty and North Wayne Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Which we've been talking about anyway, by the way. It's better, it's better logistically.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Great, thank you. Well, first of all, Ken, I appreciate you acknowledging Garrett Hill. Thank you. My questions about Wayne Press, Damian, thanks for asking them. Just two other quick questions. There's not going to be any sponsorship advertising on the actual tent. You're not going to brand the tent. Am I correct?
We did have sponsor banners and signs on the, actually put them on the barriers for the, you know, the cars were coming in. So we had Brandy, I Really Trust, Pico.
First Resource.
Yeah, First Resource, you know, you know, other local stakeholders. We also did some interesting sponsorship stuff with a couple of the car dealers, because the take, the tailgate idea to have cars and Jeeps on site was really interesting. And and they're very interested in doing that again. Comcast is interested in having a kind of a mobile AV video truck there as part of an attraction. So again, make it kind of fun and cool and something for everybody. We have, we, you know, we brought Cornhole in, and we brought, we were just trying to make it up as we went along. But, but yeah, the sponsors are interested in having their, their names and logos in there. And I think it's, I think it's a great, you know, especially inside the tent where you're not like, it doesn't look sloppy. I think there's a real opportunity for that, you know, this demographic that obviously we're catering to here is attractive to a lot of sponsors. So that, that, just add in itself, the fact that people are willing to donate money and spend money for the benefit of our town speaks volumes as to kind of what benefit we're getting out of it.
And I, I think that's great. And I think the sponsorship idea is great. I just don't know where that line is between sponsorship and gaudy billboard is.
Yeah.
No, we're very careful about that.
I, I, I know you guys are, and Wayne is a mom-and-pop town, and I'll leave that to you. That's just in the back of my mind. And then the last thing I have, last question is, you said that that you guys can, you know, get this going for a couple of months to maybe three months. After that, if there is a funding issue, would you be asking the township? Would you take it down? Would you try to hit up the sponsors again? I guess if you don't get the money, is the last resort asking the township for money, or would it just be to take it down?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to take it down, but we're confident we can get them.
Right. And the, and the WBA has some resources to put towards things as well. So.
Okay, so the township is not a.
They're not our backstop, no.
Unless, unless you want to. We're all ears for that.
You know, that federal funding you got, we'll take some of that.
Want to know what, what, you know, what the, you know, you know, you know, what you would do if you do run out of money?
No, we would not come to the township for that.
We, we've been very successful, and we raise all that money for the music festival every year privately sponsored, so they just, you know.
And the Fall Festival and Christmas and Trick or Treat, we've been able to garner a lot of sponsors. And like I said, we are having people call us that we've never had called before.
Thank you.
Third additional commissioner comment. Staff comment?
It just, just real quickly, and and I think it, it's worth bringing up at this point, and I'll let Chris go into a little bit more of the details, but just taking a couple of seconds to recognize a lot of the different ways that the Board of Commissioners and the township have been helping the Radnor businesses ever since the start of this pandemic. We don't, we don't really have a scoreboard that we're keeping, but most of it's locked safe up here. So I don't know, Chris, if you wouldn't mind, just step through a couple of them real quickly.
Currently, authority, the manager, and obviously the commissioners, we were able to institute relaxed parking throughout the township, which I believe helped many during the toughest times. That relaxation, we far extended most other municipalities, and some didn't even relax it at all. Number two is, we started coming up with concepts, hearing from the different businesses and restaurants about pickup capabilities to allow them with the takeout only or no occupancy, whether by personal choice or governor mandate. We created, and you'll see the signs now, and this is for all the residents and businesses to know that we made it not just for restaurants, it was made for all of the businesses in Wayne, where there's two spots throughout the area that was allowed to have the pickup, and that's still in place. We have ten minutes to pick up whatever you need or run into the store to allow the businesses to prosper. And then we worked with Garrett Hill, stayed in touch with those businesses and made sure that they were aware of those opportunities as well. And those are just a couple of them. There's been a lot of personal meetings and adjustments. And and I think we're very proud of how the staff has been over backwards, no matter what division, from public works to parking to police to the manager's office, trying to make sure that anybody who has an issue or concern during this crazy time how it's affecting business and retail, that we were responsive. So just a quick review.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. And then, I mean, we'll recognize that it hasn't always been perfect. Not every response and and resolution to the different questions and issues have been to everyone's liking. But I, I think, given the circumstances, everyone, I, I think Radnor did a, did a fantastic job adjusting and helping as many as we could. So just a, a couple of seconds to to highlight that quickly. Thank you.
As a, and just as a business owner and also as a property owner in Wayne, like, you guys have been tremendous. I know I've been, sometimes I get frustrated. I'm trying to work around. We were all kind of feeling around the dark, but not only for my business, but for my tenants in the business, all that, all that stuff really helped. And again, like the positive feedback from people in this community is like, people are literally saying to us, like, you guys saved this town. And that's everyone, that's everyone on this screen here, because it took all those people to work together. I got interviewed by the Wall Street Journal about how we came together as a group in this community to solve problems and help each other. And that's, that's pretty amazing. Like, that's, that's a pretty incredible track record for, you know, how we all just, you know, got to work through stuff and figure it out. And Chris, to your point, all those things that you guys did were, every one of them helped and kept a lot of people, kept the lights on.
The Journal published that article?
It's, it's, I'm waiting on some kind of photo, but it's supposed to come out in the next two weeks or so, which is pretty amazing.
Let me know. I'd appreciate that. That's something that we should get through the, the proper channels and make sure that we're promoting to help.
Also, through Delaware County Chamber of Commerce, Wayne Business Association has been named the Business Association of the Year for all that we did to support our businesses. So we're really very excited about that as well, considering what a large population is in Delaware County, and there are some fifteen business associations. So we're really proud of that. And part of, like, like Ken said, that wasn't just us as the WBA, but it was the whole community, and that's why we were recognized. So thanks for your support, because you guys are part of that.
Yeah, and just to to wrap that, there still is a pandemic. We understand that, and we'll look forward to working with the WBA if this gets approved to make sure that, you know, we're, we're keeping folks as safe as possible while balancing the, their survival of the businesses.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero. Mr. Booker off the desk. Moving on to. Item four, reports of standing committees.
I just have one thing from the library. So the library is currently seeking. Board members to join their Board of Trustees. If anyone is interested, the applications. Are open until March thirty-first, which I think is next Wednesday, next Tuesday. And they can, you can go to the Radnor Memorial Library website and download. The information that you need in order to apply. So I think that it would be great to get some. More community members involved with the library. And I think they have a couple of seats open. So if you have. A talent for fundraising or for events or finance, they're looking for people with. Varied areas of expertise. And just from Shade Tree, I just want to, from our meeting last week, they're already starting to work on the, the spring planting. Plan. They've got a fantastic communications. Project that they're working on that'll be coming to us, I think, in the next couple of weeks. And I just want to commend them for the work that they are doing as a board. And seriously, if you haven't seen, I saw for the first time, I guess I don't get out very much. All the trees that have been planted in the parking lot that we were just talking about where the tent is going to go. Or near there. They've planted a ton of trees back in that parking lot and it looks fantastic. I mean, that desolate. Parking lot has really been enhanced by the trees. And then also the trees that they've been planting up and down Lancaster. And they're working really hard with, with Steve and Norcini and our. Our Public Works to do that. So it's really fantastic. So I just wanted to give them a shout out.
Thank you. Item five, new business. Is there any new business?
Well, yeah, I just want to give a quick shout out to Tammy Cohen. Thank you very much for. The Easter egg hunts. I know there were a lot of happy faces for the people in Clemacron, my neighbors in Clemacron, as well as. What you did at the Wayne Art Center. It's great. And I appreciate the fact that you are extremely. Creating new ways or you're constantly creating new ways to help, to help get kids out of the house and. Just dealing with COVID. So Bill, please give her my kudos. Also, and this was brought to my attention. And maybe we could do something, Bill, I don't know. Believe, there's a Commissioner Higgins, not Jim Higgins, but another Higgins. Recently passed and Kevin Higgins. And if this board, I don't know if it's so, so pleases the board or whoever to. Have, I don't know, maybe a moment of silence in the next, the next meeting as we open up or some kind of. You know, I, I don't know. I'll let that, you know, the residents and the people that knew him, I'll leave that up to them. But. I think that'd be a nice tribute. Thanks.
Is there any old business?
I, just, if I could, real quick. I don't know if this is no old or new, but I. As we all know now, the federal government adopted the stimulus plan that did include. Funding that is making its way down to municipalities. Radnor Township was included in that funding. As we understand it, the, the amount allocated to Radnor was three point one five million. I'm working with Bob today right now. We're going to put together a summary to the board on, you know, what that funding will look like. I'd share my screen real quickly, but I think we, we had a little trouble earlier and. We're getting a little long tonight, but I'll, I'll show you. Basically, that three million covers our losses. And I'm sure the WBA would like us to help back, you know, backstop the, the tent with that money, but as, as you'll see. The impact of the, the lost business tax revenue that we realized last year. And the, you know, the one and a half million dollar deficit we budgeted going into this year. Pretty much the whole three million dollars is spoken for in kind of refilling the general fund back up. So. We'll put together a summary for the board. So you guys have that and will know exactly. You know, how that fits into everything that, everything else that we have going on. The other important aspect of it that we learned is that we should expect half. Here in the coming weeks, but the other half will not be distributed until a year from now. So. You know, well, it'll take us a while to realize all of that money. And there, there obviously are some stipulations tied to it. But the good news is, lost revenue is one of the stipulations. And quite clearly, that is, as we discussed during the budget. What has impacted us the most in terms of COVID's impact, direct impact on the township. So. Just a quick update on that. And like I said, we'll, we'll have a summary to the board here in the next day or so.
Great. Public comment. Is there any final public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall.
Good evening. I've already submitted this as an email, so hopefully can circulate it. But this is Matt Marshall, two-two-eight Walnut Avenue. I plan to talk about the, the Eastern Radnor Road development, but this is more of a, a kind of more of a higher level. And I'll just read from the email. Dear Commissioners, with all the development activity pending in North Wayne. Specifically with Eastern Lot, Concordia Group, Rockwell's assisted living application at Valley Forge Military Academy. And the site off of Eagle Road and VFMAs proposed conversion to a charter school. Now is the time for a community meeting. I believe there should be a comprehensive presentation. For the North Wayne residents, from the applicants and our Board of Commissioners, before each of these matters. Become siloed in their respective categories. Similar to previously held community development subcommittee meetings for major projects in Radnor Township of scale. Such as the Radnor Middle School redevelopment, Villanova student housing along Route Thirty. And more recently, the Penn Medicine Complex on King of Prussia Road. The COVID nineteen pandemic can't negate the need for vital community meetings. Particularly while massive developments are further for approval in our neighborhoods. There are more significant development projects happening in North Wayne than have occurred in many decades. We all need more visibility from our elected officials, Board of Commissioners. And much more direct resident engagement. When will these new development projects for North Wayne be discussed comprehensively? And in total, during our next Board of Commissioners meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Stand adjourned. Thank you all.